Welcome, everyone. Good morning. I'd like to call the order, the March 28, 2023 Indian River County Board of County Commissioners meeting. And we will start with a moment of silence for first re- silence, reflection for first responders and members of the armed forces with an invoc- then followed by an invocation by the Reverend Arthur Rigby of the New Bethel AME Church, and then Pledge of Allegiance led by Commissioner Darrell Lor. I think so. Did you hear?
Darrell Lor, he is. He's right here.
There he is, right there. Okay. All right. If everybody would please rise.
Let us pray. Gracious Father, we're so thankful to be here today for another wonderful Tuesday. God, we ask that this meeting be very productive for every citizen in every corner of Indian River County. We ask that every decision that's made that be a benefit to you, me, and the county commissioners. This we ask in Jesus's name, led by the love of the Lord, say amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Rigby. Commissioners, any additions, deletions, or emergency items for the agenda?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Fleischer.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Fleischer, and second by Commissioner Moss. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. Next, we're going to move on to proclamations and presentations. The announcement, the first is five A, announcement renewal of HUD, High Performer. There you are, and there's Rob- there she is, right there. Okay, and there's Robin Miller with you. Okay, good, all right.
Phil Metz and Community Development Director. And good morning, Commissioners and members of the public. I'd like to first congratulate- I want to be the first one to congratulate Robin on achieving high performer from HUD. I can tell you a couple of- little bit of context and background here. So, we have all kind of come to the conclusion that we work very hard on affordable housing here in the county. Obviously, it's not enough. It's not enough anywhere. But we have quite a few programs that are very, very successful, and you could sort of think of these programs in terms of four components. The first is our federal housing programs, which are HUD-sponsored and which Robin is the administrator of. And Robin and her staff are here today to talk about the HUD programs, give you a little context, how many people we help, what her success rate has been, and so forth. And she's about to do that. We also have a state housing initiatives partnership, SHIP program. That has helped $21 million worth of housing assistance. We've rolled that out since its inception in the 90s. That's a rolling grant loan program. It comes back to us, and we can reloan that money out. We've gotten thousands of peoples in homes through the SHIP program as well. There are local programs, the Reno, the CINO program, the things we've launched last year successfully. We've gotten out affordable housing for veterans, triplexes. We've gotten assistance to some of our nonprofit partners, and that's the fourth component, the nonprofits. So, we have places like By the River and St. Francis Manor and Salvation Army, any number of other entities that that help us with housing programs. So, it's a four-component program, and I'm here to talk about today to turn the mic over to Robin, who's going to talk about our federal HUD program at this time. So, Robin, why don't you tell them the big announcement and and give them a little background on what we've been doing here?
Okay, well, we again made high performer. The county did for everything that we have worked so hard. But I would like to do one thing, if I may. I would like to introduce my staff, who without them, we couldn't have done this, and that's Stacy Bush, Sebia Martinez, Gil Porday, Anna Ramos, and Patricia Simpson. They have been truly, truly phenomenal, especially since my health. They have been, they have stepped up to the plate to really and truly make sure that this is happening for us. So, with that said, we'll go to the next slide. The county administers three programs. The- back up, one more. We administer the HCV Housing Choice Voucher Program. We administer the VASH program, which is the Veterans Affairs Supportive Housing. And we also administer the Emergency Housing vouchers, which was recently given to us. And how it is given to us, we have Congress, then HUD, then HUD trinkles down the funding to us, and then we administer it from there. We have to deal with landlords and tenants, and and we have to make the policies and procedures. Next slide. We have gone from 345 vouchers to 351 regular vouchers. Veterans Affairs, we started out at 14 vouchers, and we're now up to 500, I mean, 59. The emergency housing vouchers for the homeless, we got 34. Go ahead. Applicants match, this is how we match it up. The applicants apply for housing, and that's under the Housing Choice Voucher Program. They're pulled from a waitlist, that we cannot pull somebody that's not on the waitlist. The emergency vouchers are given to us through a referral process. HUD gives us the vouchers, and then the referral comes from the Treasure Coast Home Services Council. So, this way, they're responsible for whether or not the person is screened, whether or not they're homeless or not. They give us the letter, and then we take it and we we get them housed. The Veteran Affairs Supportive Housing is a little bit different. This is for the veterans, and we work very closely with the VA. We have an excellent relationship. I don't know if the VA is here right now. I don't know if Dixon McReynolds is here, but he's supposed to come, and hopefully, he'll come before this is over with, so you can meet him. But it's all case management applied. In other words, if a veteran is approved through the VA, they have to, the VA has to approve them, and then they give us the referral, and they have to make sure that they are in compliance. In other words, they they counsel them. They have social workers that counsel them throughout the whole process of them being on our program. If they don't comply with that element, then their their voucher is pulled. And that's the VA pools, which is better for us. So, HUD has our major responsibilities. Well, we, they have to develop the regulations, requirements, handbooks, notices, and other guidance to implement the Housing Choice Voucher Programs, which is all three of these. HUD allocates HCV program funds to our local government, which is us. And then HUD monitors the agency compliance with the HCV program requirements and agi- agency performance in program administration. And then our responsibility is to make sure we have local policies and procedures implemented. We have to review the eligibility of every person that comes off the waitlist. We have to maintain the waitlist, because that would be a HUD finding if we did not. We issue the vouchers and assist the applicant in finding a secure, decent place to live. We also conduct outreach to make sure that the the tenants are not sent to one area. They're given the option of being able to go everywhere, and that's where the affordable housing comes in, where we lack housing for our tenants. We have to make sure that we've approved the rental, we've approved the owner, and we've approved the tenancy. We also have to approve the owners. The owners cannot be somebody who has criminal records and that kind of thing. We we have to deny them. They cannot be an owner. We also have to monitor the applicants and rental units for ongoing compliance. That's when we have to make sure that they're always in compliance with their income and the unit is in compliance. The responsibilities of the owner, now, this falls under the owner. The owner has to screen the applicant. If the applicant has issues on their credit report, that's left up to the owner and the tenant, not us, as far as whether or not they want to rent to them. They have to maintain fair housing and discrimination laws. They cannot discriminate. They have to maintain how the housing unit and make sure the unit's in compliance. They have to collect the rents and enforce the lease. They have to attend our landlord meetings, and we have a conference room up in our office that we have landlord meetings. We have to. This is a HUD mandate requirement, that we have to have that for them. The responsibilities of the applicants. The applicant is to provide us all the information to make sure that they're they're not telling us a story. They have to, we have to have all of their income. Everyone that lives there, they can't sublease. They have to take care of their units. They have to comply with the term of the lease with the owner. If they don't, then we can pull the voucher. If the owner is going to send them a notice to vacate for that, then we pull that voucher. They cannot engage in drug-related or criminal activity, fraud, bribery, or corruption. They have to notify us, our office, within 10 days of any income changes, family status, terminating lease, et cetera. And these are our five mandated reporting requirements. We have PIC, which I'm going to give you that what PIC is. It's Public Housing Info Center. We have CMAP, which is what we're measured on, their county is. And that's the Section 8 Management Assessment Program. That's done once a year, but we do it annually, I mean, monthly, and then we have to submit it to HUD once a year. We do the voucher management system, the VMS, and that is where we, they look at our financials. So, we have to submit that to HUD every month. Then we have the income, Enterprise Income Verification, which is the EIV. That's where we're able to find out if they're working. So, if they've not told us that they're working, we find out within three months where they're employed at. Then we have to do the FDS, which is the Financial Reporting System, and that's where we work very closely with our finance department, and we submit that annually. That has to go out. CMAP is the biggest one. CMAP is the, it has 14 indicators of what HUD looks at, and this is where we continue to get our 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 funding. The HUD, this is how they score us, measure us. We could be high performing, standard, or troubled. If we score over 90%, we have earned a high performing designation, which is very, very, very hard to get. And it is a, it's it's an advantage for us for the funding. In other words, if we were not high performer, they would have never given us or given us the invite for the emergency vouchers or for the VASH vouchers for our veterans. By keeping that high performer, we're able to, every time they come out with a new voucher or additional vouchers, we're able to ask for them. And we do. And we've gotten a little bit overwhelmed with getting so many more now than what-
That's quite a lot of help. That's 39 VASH vouchers, 59, sorry, 59 emergency and 39 VASH vouchers.
That's correct.
So, it's almost 100 additional people we've been able to help by maintaining the high performer standard.
That's correct.
So.
Next. Indian River County, we are high performer, and we should be very proud of that. We have been high performing now for 16 years. And again, it's it's very difficult. And this this is, we got their number, baby. Okay. So, this is EIV. That's Phil. This is, that falls under the EIV. In other words, the tenants cannot try to overlook an income. We got their number. In other words, they're going to pay their fair share of rent. They're going to pay it. And if they don't, if we find out later on that they hadn't paid it, then we put them under repayment agreement if they've come one whole year, that they hadn't shared with us that they were working, or whatever the situation may be, then we pull their voucher. And this is the mission of the Section 8 program. This was implemented many, many, many years ago. And if you if you want to read it, you can. I can read it to you. But it's where we partnership with our private owners and property managers in efficient, professional, ethical manner, which will create a team effort to provide decent, safe, sanitary, and affordable housing for the clients that we serve in this community, and enhancing the housing stock for underprivileged and low-income applicants. And this includes our seniors. I'm very pro-senior. I made it where the seniors are a priority on our waitlist, because they're on a fixed income. They have nowhere to go, especially now with all of these very high rents. We have been able to help several seniors with the emergency housing vouchers. It's only till 2030, but that's still several years to buy time for them, to hopefully, we can open up our waitlist and put them on there and get them in housing. And then we're to assist the low-to-moderate income residents in making a transition to a greater financial security, to provide our clientele with empathy, dignity, and responsive customer service. I am very, 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 very adamant with that with my staff. And by providing the high, by providing the highest quality customer service, integrity is never compromised. We make sure that we are treating our customers with dignity. I mean, you know, they're coming into us, and they have no money, and they're scared, and they don't know where they're going to go or what they're going to do. And we definitely have to treat them with respect. And even if we can't help them, we try our best to find them some resources out there to be able to help them. Why are we so successful? Because of the board, because of the county staff, because we're a high-performing agency, because of my competent staff. Again, without them, we couldn't have done this. And can't is not in our vocabulary. We do not take no for an answer, and we do not. Any of you that know me personally, know that I don't take no for an answer. I'm a fighter, and I will make sure that we persevere in anything we do. We can, we can, how can we do even better? Well, we can expand and enhance enhance our portfolio. An example was, we got the extra emergency housing vouchers, because we're a high performer. That was a lot of vouchers. And I'm hoping for them to give me another invite for another 30, is my hopes, so I can pull in another 30 people into housing. The additional VASH vouchers went from 14 to 59 within five years. That's a lot. We continue to achieve the high performer designation, and that is number one on our books. And then that's it. I I I know that we, you guys, have administered this program for 40 years, and I don't believe that you have ever, ever had a presentation where you know anything about it, ever. And it's so important that you do know what you're what you're administering, and and you're more than welcome to come over to our office and and see how we operate. I would love for you to. But I thank you very much.
Phil, anything else?
Do you have any questions?
I can tell you that I had one of my first issues with the housing over the week, and then yesterday, I had a meeting with the with the folks involved, and our phone call was made to Robin, and my aide made a phone call to Robin on Monday, or yeah, on Friday, and we got all the answers we needed. It was absolutely amazing. I was like, thank God we have people that know this stuff.
Yeah, and it's extremely complicated. I I love programs that get independently audited like this, like the MPO or our transit system or HUD, because, you know, I know they're doing a good job. I'll get 12 compliments for every complaint, you know, from the constituents we serve, maybe more. But then I get this independent validation from a a group that knows what has to be, all the boxes that have to be checked, what has to be done properly, and I see that validation. And I can tell you, high performer's pretty rare. We went through all the performance rankings, and it's brutally honest. They call everybody high performer, standard, substandard, or troubled. You know, I've never seen like that as an official parlance, and there are a lot of troubled agencies. I mean, some of them right in our area. So, I I my hat's off to Robin. She's courageous and cooperative, and just ask you to reach out if you know a veteran in need, a person who's in a, on the ropes, Robin will help them. Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations.
It was absolutely amazing what I what I heard on the phone and what I witnessed yesterday, how we, maybe the person, the answer we had, but for different reasons. But just the fact that we have you and your staff out there doing this, like Phil said, it's a very complicated and very time-consuming and very, but yet personal service we're giving these folks that that need it the most. So, as Chairman, I definitely want to thank you and your staff for the outstanding job that you all are doing.
Thank you.
So, Commissioners, any further questions or comments for Robin and her staff?
No, just to thank you, Mr. Chairman. Robin, you mentioned that some people may not be familiar with every bit of resource that you do. I just want you to know that we hear continually about Robin's efforts and the team's efforts. In many ways, it comes through with, through whether it's the Veterans Council, or it's internally, or we look at what's what's happened with the SHIP program and what the shortcomings were and how they can be overcome. You said something very important about yes. Your team seeks for yes more than any other team, and I want you to know how well it's appreciated, because we we happen to be in contact with the folks in need, and then it is satisfied through your entity, through all of your works, and Phil's team as well. We're we're very fortunate, we're very blessed, so it's no, no surprise of the high performer recognition, because you are high performers.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is Dixon McReynolds in the audience yet?
No.
No.
We have a guest from Veterans Administration. He gets stuck in traffic, I guess, on 95, who's coming to, coming to give Robin her accolades here on this.
No, actually, he was going to, I wanted him to explain how he actually handles the VASH vouchers and how he works so well with the veterans, because I think most of you are very pro-veterans. And he's a wonderful man. We have an excellent relationship with the VA in West Palm, who gives us the referrals. And I'm sad that he's not here right now, but that's okay. Maybe next time. Maybe we'll do this again real soon, so we can go into a little bit more detail for it.
Yeah, we did, Commissioner, yeah, Commissioner Moss and I were just discussing how we should have regular briefings on housing. So, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Robin.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right. Thank you, Phil. Thank you, Robin. Next, move on to five B. Presentation of proclamation honoring Anthony. I always go by Tony, I'm sorry. Tony Consolo on his retirement from the Indian River County Sheriff's Department. This will be presented by your former boss and now Commissioner Lor, and so Tony, bring you and your crew, come on up.
Thank you, Chairman.
I have a family here.
Bring them all up, Tony.
Bring them all up. Mr. Chair, it is an honor and a pleasure for me to read this proclamation validating
Captain Anthony Consolo's career at Indian River County Sheriff's Office. I'll read the proclamation, then we have a few comments. Whereas Tony Consolo is retiring from Indian River County Sheriff's Office effective March 21, 2023, and whereas Tony began his law enforcement career in 1995 and has served with distinction for over 27 years. And whereas Tony, during his lengthy tenure at the sheriff's office, served in numerous capacities as he steadily progressed into the supervisory ranks of sergeant, lieutenant, and captain. And whereas Tony received many acknowledgements and commendations for his outstanding efforts, including Law Enforcement Deputy of the Quarter, Tactical Achievement, and Life-saving Awards. And whereas Tony worked diligently under four sheriffs to serve and protect the residents of Indian River County and the state of Florida. And whereas Tony's selfless commitment to his profession has earned him the admiration of sheriff flowers and all of those who've had the privilege to work with him. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Indian River County, Florida, that Captain Anthony Consolo is lauded for the vast contributions he has made to the people of our county during his exceptional law enforcement career, and that the Board wishes him a happy and prosperous retirement. Signed by all five county commissioners. Congratulations, Tony.
Very much.
Thank you.
Chairman Ehrman, Vice Chairwoman Adams, Commissioner Moss, Commissioner Lor, Commissioner Fleischer, Dylan, Mike, it is an honor and a privilege to stand before you today. It's been a great career. It really has. You know, it's, every time I would leave, I don't think people realize the commitment that it takes from the family of law enforcement officers, the worry that they deal with on a daily basis when their family members go out into the field. When I would come home, Sue would always ask, "How was your day?" And I would just tell her, "It was okay. It was a good day." But I really never shared with her some of the things that we face. So, I'm going to share one with my friends and family and everybody that's here today. As a young officer, I responded to a domestic violence call in which a, I met a female victim out in the driveway of her residence, and she told me that her husband had battered her, it was quite obvious, and that he had locked himself in the house with two children, an 18-month-old and a 3-month-old. So, as I approached the residence, I heard screaming inside. I tried to open the door. The door was locked, so we forced entry into the residence, and I witnessed a father holding an 18-month-old and a 3-month-old. It was obviously that he inflicted damage on both children. In fact, he had a box cutter in his hand when I made entry. I drew my firearm, ordered him to put down the box cutter. He raised it up towards one of the child, and I felt my finger pulling on the trigger just a little bit. I gave him another command, and eventually, he dropped the box cutter, and the children were saved. But that's some of the things that we witness and deal with as law enforcement officers that I don't think the community understands and realizes it. So, with that said, I appreciate everybody that's here, all my friends and family. For those of you that biked over here, I saw that. I really appreciate that. We're getting on it. So, I know they're hosting a bike class right now, and we have seven officers or several officers from out of, outside our jurisdiction and so forth that are here taking that class. I can tell you that my service as a public servant is not over. I don't know what form it's going to take or where it's going to lead me, but I promise this community, I'm not done. So, thank you again. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Anthony.
Joseph.
Anthony.
Joe.
You are an incredible human being, standing before this family. This family knows who you are, but they don't know what you truly mean to all of us. It's great to see Big Tony. That's you. That's, that's Tony's dad. And little Tony, Tony's son. We got all three Tonys together. I forgive you for pepper spraying me and then exposing me to gas. He was one of our trainers, Carol Boyd. Tony, you, you, you are my FTO. You've grown to understand your family, the importance of morality and values, sincerity that you've given to this community. You're right. I don't know how much the community knows, how much it takes from the person, from the family, to give what you've given. You've delivered, D-Delta all the way. Thank you. Again, you're the reason why I'm up here, okay? Thank you for that. And I apologize, because perhaps maybe I'm the reason why you're here today as well. I didn't think it was over for you. I don't know why. It's unsettling to me, because you are an incredible mentor. There's a sea of people in the back of this room, and there's many leagues out there that you have helped, encouraged, guided, and made this a safer place, a greater place to live and to work. And it was a privilege and an honor to work for you. Yes, that's right. You are my sergeant, too, lieutenant. Now, you got, big scene. Very proud and honored to have walked the pathway with you, and you're right. I don't, I don't think that you can say you're done. We don't know where it's going to go, but it's got to go somewhere, because you are one incredible individual, and you have a great family. And I'm, I'm very, very glad that Tony's here, to see you here, to hear how wonderful of a job that you did for this young man and the rest behind you, because this is what it's all about. This is what it's all about, and you've continually said that throughout your entire career. When, when I first started here, you said, that was with the agency, you said, "Well, you should be getting experience pay for up in New York." I said, "No, that, that's all right." You said, "We're not going to make you any better. We're just going to make this a better place." And I want to thank you for your encouragement and your guidance throughout the years, on and off duty.
Thank you, Commissioner. Appreciate that.
Thank you for your commitment to our community. Thank you for your commitment to our community. I'm going to date myself here, but I remember when I saw you, like, for the first time as the new deputy on the road, I was on the fire truck. You were obviously in the patrol car. And we got to know each other over many years, and did some things, and went to some calls and other events. And one thing I'd always remember, that you're the same guy now that you were then. And just always a good guy. And I've never heard, I don't think I ever heard anybody, whether it was Sheriff's Department, whether it was Fire Department, whether it was people we knew, ever said a bad thing about Deputy Consolo. And then it was sergeant, and it was lieutenant, and on up. And that's always good to know, that Tony was just a great officer and a good guy. So, thank you for your service. And on behalf of the commission, we appreciate it.
Thank you, Chairman.
Mr. Chairman.
Anything else?
You know, Tony, several years ago, many folks don't know this, but...
Tony, it wasn't over.
Wow. Went to the FBI National Academy, which there's only been a handful of deputies and lieutenants and captains at the Indian River County Sheriff's Office that's ever gone to that prestigious institution. And shortly after Tony came back, I believe he was promoted to captain. And a lot of people, you know, we talk about the family, but some of the things that I recall vividly were, a group of us would meet from about 6:30 to 7:45 in the morning and have lots of coffee. Of course, we had ESPN on the television in the office, but we didn't talk about work until about a quarter to eight. But we talked about families. And I can tell you, to the Consolo family, Tony talked and talked and talked about his children all of the time, which kind of vicariously, I got to know you. So for that, Tony, I say congratulations and good luck to you in the future.
Thank you very much, Commissioner.
Anything else? Mr. Moss?
So, I wanted to take this opportunity to thank you in behalf of the children of this community. Not only for that day, the harrowing story that you recounted, but the time that you spent on children's services. And I'm glad that I had the opportunity to work with you. Thank you, and God bless.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tony, I had the privilege and honor of serving as your counsel under the tenure of your second sheriff. And I can tell you, the counseling was mutual. And the guidance you provided was beneficial to me as well. And then to watch you grow and prosper in leadership, and I always have tremendous confidence and faith in you and the men and women that you lead. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll expect the golf lesson later on, too.
I think everything that has already been said, but the one thing I will add is, is you have been a pillar of the department. Your character and commitment to the community is widely known and very much appreciated. And I think for everybody that has said something here today, there's 20 more that wish they could be here to say the same thing. So, thank you for your commitment. Thank you for continuing in other roles in the future to be part of our community, and we are better for your service.
Thank you, Rachel.
Any comments from the audience?
And actually, to the chair, if I may.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Luckily, in my role, I actually don't get to interact with a lot of sheriff's office men and women, but I will state, yes. But actually, I did get to work on occasion with Tony. And I just, I want to say, every time that I got to work with him or cross paths on an issue, I was just always impressed. He was just, he was great to work with. And just want to at least say that he was, it was just always a pleasure working with him on whatever the issue, whether it was, like Commissioner Moss said, children's services or some other issue that we came across. So, don't get to work every day with the men and women who wear the uniform in this community, but certainly, it was a great opportunity to get to work with them.
Thank you very much, Dylan. I understand the sunshine law much better now, thanks to you.
Any comments from anybody else? From the family, one of them? All right. With that being said, Tony, again, thank you for your service.
Thank you very much, everyone.
Mr. Chairman?
Congratulations, sir.
We have one more comment.
A couple of folks that want to say, when we're done?
Tony, I want to pass on something to you. First off, being a recipient of this myself, six weeks ago, seven weeks ago, to see and witness a friend get it is a true honor. But I want to share with everybody here, in 1997, January, when I started my career with the sheriff's office, met Tony, he had crabs in a bait shop at the time. And he was quite the character, very involved in the community, quite the hangout of the spot. But I want to share a quick story, because when I was cleaning out my desk when I retired, I found a cassette. It took me a much longer time to find an actual cassette player than the actual cassette itself, but I didn't know what was on it. And what was on it was an incident that happened probably back in 1999, 2000. Tony was a patrol sergeant. And in that incident, I conducted a traffic stop in Wabasha around 2:00 in the morning, and ultimately, the driver fled out of the vehicle. And I pursued after him, tried to release my dog from the car in the process, and that didn't work like it was supposed to. But we got into a water lot next to a house, and my vehicle was right in front of this house with the blue lights rotating. That's what we had back then. And the suspect was fighting us pretty bad. And we were deep into the woods, deep into the brush, couldn't see anything. We had our flashlights. We were, you know, trying to wrestle this guy into handcuffs. Well, during that time, some individual came out of the house with a rifle and just arbitrarily opened fire at us into the woods. And we couldn't see him, or that would have been dealt with. All we could hear was the rounds whizzing over our head. So we shut our flashlights off. I radioed that we were taking fire from unknown individual. Tony was a supervisor on duty, and he gave a command that very few supervisors would give. And first, he said, "I want every SO unit en route from the county. Every unit from Sebastian Police Department en route from Sebastian." To send everybody from every direction is typically unheard of, because you have the rest of the county in the man. But he made that call. And because of that, that guy was quickly apprehended, and we were able to drag our suspect out of the woods. But that type of leadership, he took care of us, the troops. That has also let out, as these commissioners said, into the county, with how he protected the residents. That was always your focus, was protect the community, even though sometimes you pulled some crazy stunts along the way. And I'll keep those stories away this time. But thank you very much. I appreciate it. God bless you.
We got a picture.
You have to get the obligatory retirement picture. We put the good filter on. You'll be...
How about that beautiful family?
We'll put the good filter on.
Tony, bring them up. Look at her. Remember when they got to living? Wow. it. Next, we're going to have a presentation of proclamation honoring Paul Fafeta on a lifetime of service to Indian River County. It's, Paul's a former deputy. He retired many years ago, but this is more about what, probably what he's done since. So, come on up. I'm going to read this first, then I'm going to talk about you. This is a proclamation honoring Paul Fafeta on a lifetime of service to Indian River County. Whereas, after graduating from Beaver Beach High School in 1968, Paul Fafeta served our country in the United States Marine Corps during two tours in Vietnam. And whereas, Paul assisted the residents of Indian River County over a lengthy career with the sheriff's office, retiring as a captain after more than 30 years. And whereas, Paul continued his involvement as a local Lodge 69 President, State Officer of the Fraternal Order Police, and co-founder of Fight Drug Abuse of Indian River County. And whereas, Paul has been a driving force in local coastal and clean water conservation efforts as president and state officer of the Treasure Coast Chapter of the Coastal Conservation Association, and is founding president of the Clean Water Coalition of Indian River County. Whereas, Paul has given his all to the mission of cleaning up our lagoon and stemming the flow of pollutants that impair the estuary. And whereas, Paul has provided input and maintained oversight on important water and safety initiatives pertaining to our lagoon, including leading a ban on application of potentially harmful biosolids and encouraging the stop to the use of glyphosate for weed control. And whereas, Paul's waterborne tours aboard his pontoon boat have educated countless people on the importance of restoring seagrass cover while generating local, national, and international stories of our diverse estuary. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Indian River County, Florida, that the board applauds the contributions of Captain Paul Fafeta has made to the citizenry of Indian River County, and wishes him well in his future endeavors adopted this 28th day of March, 2023, and signed by all five county commissioners. Sir, I thank you. I've known you for a long time. Probably known me longer than I've known me, but such as we just talked with Tony Consolo and others, and, you know, I knew you when you were at the Sheriff's Department, and we became good friends over the years. And after you retired, I saw what you were doing, championing the waterways of Indian River County, especially the lagoon. And you brought me in to be a part of that and be on the board of the Coastal Conservation Association and others. And I think your contributions have been just outstanding to bring attention to the issues we're having with our water and especially our lagoon with regards to all that we're trying to do. You've been a big help and a big asset. And I could just go on and on about what you've done and what you've been a part of, between having a family and doing fishing guide tours and doing educational tours and doing what you do, serving on various boards with regards to our environment. I don't know how you got it all done, but you did it. And you've done a stellar job, and I appreciate it.
Joey, thank you, sir.
Commissioners?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Captain Fafeta, thank you. Thank you for many years of service. You're my supervisor as well, and a friend, a friend of the counties. And when I heard this, that you were moving, I heard it, somebody just mentioned it, say, "Hey, did you hear? Paul's leaving." I said, "No, he's not. No, he's not. He's enrooted in this community. He's done so much. He's got a lot of work going on with the coalition. He cares about the lagoon. Yeah, he's leaving." I said, "No." His bride is part of the local DAR. I mean, they're enrooted. No, he's leaving. And then I heard you were doing more and more tours. You liked the rank of captain, so you got your sea captain license as well. This way we can still call you captain. And I said, "No, the touring's going great. He's going on fishing expeditions. He's not leaving." I said, "He's got my gun, too." Yes, I do. Gun that I started my career with in New York City. I said, "No, he's not leaving. Now he can't leave. We're not going to allow that to happen." But when I called and you said, "Yeah, I've made the decision," I felt it. Because you continually gave to the community after you retired. As Tony said, he doesn't know what he wants to do. You kept on doing it. You did so much. And any friend of the lagoon wants to say thank you, because you were tireless with the CCA and many endeavors, very supportive. You came here and worked hard and continue to, and you didn't have to. It was not self-serving. It was about serving the community. So I want to thank you. And where you're going up north, you realize there's not too much sea activity, but maybe you can work that out, maybe carve a little pond and do a little bit of boating. But I want to thank you for your years of commitment to Indian River County and how important a role you played in keeping this a great place.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you, Paul. And obviously, we worked together for a while. But when I was reading the proclamation last Friday, you know, when you think about joining the Marine Corps in '68, so ladies and gentlemen, this gentleman has given 54 years of public service. And most would retire and drive off into the sunset, but 54 years, that's something to be proud of. So thank you, Paul.
Thank you, Darrell.
Even though this is not a retirement from the agency, you realize how much institutional years have gone through the door, and even in the past six months, and we can count yours, too. It's absolutely incredible, the amount of individuals that have chosen to retire, even though this is not your retirement. But you still count in the pool.
Correct.
Hundreds and hundreds of years of commitment to this safe place. Thank you.
Senator Bush, Chairman?
Paul, I, you know, we're going to miss you. Your commitment to the Indian River Lagoon and the health of our waterways, bringing together multiple groups and organizations to advocate on such a high level for the importance of our environment, that, all that work you've done, and it's just amazing. It's amazing what you've inspired others to do. It's amazing what you've been able to accomplish in the conversations you've been able to start on a local level, a state level, and a regional level. You were always there advocating for the betterment of our environment and making sure that we remember that the decisions we make today have long-lasting implications for the future. I applaud that. I applaud your hard work. I know it hasn't always been easy, but to bring together the groups that you have, to form the coalitions that you have, is inspiring. And we are a better community for that. I appreciate that work. We will do our best to continue to carry that on in your name, but we will definitely miss you, and the community will miss you. Thank you very much. And good luck.
Mr. Moss?
Yes, thank you. Yes, we will certainly miss you. And I just want to say thank you for your role as an educator, because you did. You spend time with me, and I know you spend time with many other people. But you also have a talent for calling attention to it, media attention, to the facts, and educating the community at large. And I really appreciated that aspect of it. And please don't stop posting on Facebook. I love, I love all your posts. You know, you have a wonderful family and a wonderful life, and I hope you truly enjoy it. We will definitely miss you. Thank you.
Thank you, Laura.
Mr. Dito?
Paul, as I mentioned to you outside, I just can't thank you enough for your guidance and leadership back in the day. It was an honor to serve with you at the command staff of the SO and watch you flourish. But it's really afterward where I came to gain new respect for you and always, always invited you to a seat at the table when we were talking about county best practices and lagoon health. And that legacy is going to continue. What a man, what a mighty good man you are.
Thank you, Paul. Thank you.
For the people that don't know, he's getting this because he is moving out of town. I mean, he's well-deserved, but he's moving, and he's moving to Maine. He could have
He could have moved to Sebastian or something like that would have been a little bit better. But it's cold up there, dude.
It's gonna be nippy, but no, thank you. I'm truly honored. I want to thank my beautiful wife, Caroline. I've got my oldest daughter, Kelly, and her husband here today, numerous friends I appreciate from the Clean Water Coalition and Coastal Conservation Association, Sheriff's Office and others. This is truly, truly a humbling day and putting an end to my career with what I've been doing in the county. But growing up in this county as a young boy and fishing Indian River, as often as I could, was a real treat. At the age of twelve, catching a tagged sheep's head, twelve-ounce, twelve-inch sheep's head, that netted me a big check of twenty-five dollars. And for a twelve-year-old back in nineteen sixty-two, that was a big deal. Regardless of what I've been doing for the next sixty years, I always found time to enjoy fishing either in the lagoon, the Sebastian, Blue Cypress Lake, or wherever. And after all the great years raising four daughters, spending more than thirty years with the Sheriff's Office and five sheriffs, and I listened to Tony, I said, I'm starting to feel old. I started in nineteen seventy-four. Wow. But almost twenty years as the owner-operator of just moment guide service and enjoying every minute on the water, my wife and I have decided it's time to venture out and start a new adventure. Remembering one of Yogi Bear's popular sayings, "When you get to the fork in the road, take it." That's what we're doing. It's gonna be a big step. It's one that we're really looking forward to, and yeah, the cold is gonna be a little bit longer than some of the vacations we've had, but we're really, really looking forward to it. But before I leave, I want to repeat comments that I've made, shared with earlier Commissions and with the City of River Beach folks. Remember when we had the Los Angeles Dodgers? Remember all the fun and the folks that came in to see them? They're gone. Looking back at the county logo behind you, remembering when we had an abundance of oranges and grapefruits? You couldn't go anywhere along the highways in the state of Florida, I-95, US-1, even up into Georgia, North Carolina, South Carolina, without seeing Indian River citrus for sale. It's all but gone. Now, fast forward to the Indian River Lagoon. Let's not allow that to happen and perish like we've seen the Dodgers go and most of our citrus go. The ball is in y'all's court. Don't talk about fixing it, do it. For those here today and for our future generations, thank you for what you've done, what you'll continue to do. God bless America. Thank you.
Let's get Caroline up here.
Bring the rest up.
Paul, before you sit down, I know there might be a few people in the audience who want to say a few things. Does anybody want to speak?
How'd I guess? When I, Mike Johansson, when I first got here and the city dumped three-point-two-million gallons of raw sewage in my backyard at Bethel Creek, I found out about Paul and went to see Paul, and I said, what should I do? And Paul told me, and I've been doing it ever since. You know, it's a mark of people, the people that come to see them retire, and there's some people out in the audience that I know most of you know, but they're important people. What Paul represents more than anything is a sense of community, I think. And so if you don't know Charlie Pope back here, he doesn't get out much anymore, but he's here to see Paul. Charlie is the founder of the Youth Sailing Foundation. Charlie gave a lot of time and a lot of energy to the youth of Indian River County. We have Wilford Hart over here. Wilford, if you guys don't know him, is the guy that hires all the teachers for all your kids, or he tries to. He's, oh. There are important people. They represent the community, and that's what Paul, more than anything, I think, represented to all of us. So we wish you well, Paul, and your family, and good luck. Godspeed. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Anybody else back there? I see some folks back there. Andy, I see a few others that probably can say a few things. Maybe we don't want him to say anything.
They want to pretend.
They don't want him to go.
Pretending like he's not leaving.
All right, Paul, thanks so much for your contribution and friendship over the years. Stay in touch. So I appreciate everything you've done. All right.
All right, next, we'll move on to five D. This is a presentation of proclamation recognizing Indian River County as a moonshot community for literacy. This will be presented by Vice Chairman Commissioner Adams, and I think Mr. Oglethorpe's here, and I don't know if it's a Marine here. Mr. Oglethorpe's the president of the Moonshot. There's the rest of the crew. Madam Vice Chairman.
Thank you. It's my pleasure to read a proclamation recognizing Indian River County as a moonshot community for literacy. Whereas, children are our most precious resources and the first years of a child's life where the most rapid brain development occurs lay the foundation for all future learning. And whereas, early literacy is the gateway to all learning. From birth to third grade, we learn to read so that we can then read to learn. And whereas, literacy is a key to individual success and our community's economic prosperity with a thirteen-to-one return on investment. And whereas, as their child's first and most important teacher, families must have support, knowing that building a reading brain begins at birth. And whereas, statistics show that children reading on level by the end of third grade have a three-in-four chance of success. And whereas, the campaign for grade-level reading has declared our Indian River County Moonshot Community Action Network as a national pace setter, honoring us for the community-inspired literacy movement. And whereas, the Board of County Commission hereby agrees to join the Moonshot Moment Journey Team of Teams, working together in 2023 to make Indian River County a leading literacy capital of the nation. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Indian River County, Florida, that Indian River County is recognized as a moonshot community for literacy, taking a stand for our youngest citizens, improving early literacy, and giving every child the opportunity to be a literate, productive, and compassionate citizen who will improve our world. Adopted this twenty-eighth day of March, 2023, and signed by all five county commissioners. Mr. Oglethorpe, thank you so much, and everybody within the Moonshot Moment. You guys have made such a difference in our community in a very short period of time, the work that you guys have done. The tentacles go throughout our community, not just in the education sector, but in the work sector and the nonprofit sector. Everywhere you look, they're talking about moonshot, and we love that and love what you guys have done, and just applaud this and applaud everything you're accomplishing.
Well, thank you very much, Chairman Adams. I can't thank you enough. That proclamation is just outstanding. I mean, what else can I say? You hit it all. So I mean, it's very heartening to come up here and have these commissioners, all of you, join us on this journey to embrace this ninety percent literacy goal and to make Indian River County the literacy capital of the nation. We're trying to do that, and we think we can do it. You know, twelve years ago, it's hard to believe, it's been twelve years since we started this whole thing, I was approached by two mothers whose children were failing in school and wanting to start up a public, wanting to start up their own private school. And so as I started learning more about education, I found out that it just wasn't their kids. There was a lot of other kids who were in trouble also. And the first thing I learned, as you put in the proclamation, is that reading is the key to everything. If you don't know how to read, you're never going to do well in education. So in K through three, you learn to read. Thereafter, you read to learn. And so that's why remedial education, as adults fail so frequently, is because they never learned how to read as a young child. The second thing I learned was, as you point in the proclamation, that if you don't learn to read by the end of the third grade, you only have somewhere between a fifteen percent or twenty-five percent chance of ever catching up. But the thing that really turned me on and still drives me to this day is when I found out that two-thirds nationwide of our third graders can't read. Two-thirds. Can you imagine the moral outrage that people should feel when you find that you have two-thirds, sixty-six percent of our third graders not being able to read? How can we allow a nation to allow so many children to fail so early in their lives? And this is what drives me today and what drives all these people here in this community to try to change. We've got to change. And your proclamation points it out. You know, when we started this thing, we were thirty-ninth out of sixty-seven districts in the state. We're now twelfth. Even during COVID, we went from sixteen to twelfth. What's working is working here, and we need to take this work that's going on here and take it across the country. But first, we've got to make it happen here, and that's what we're trying to do. You know, it's just not individual success. As you point out, it's also economic success that comes by having this. It's also reduction in social problems. But I think something that people tend to forget, right now, we are in incredible competitive and national security crisis. We have got to make sure we're competing against China, we're competing against Russia. These people are out for us. And unless we get every citizen to be the most productive person they can be, we have to win this. We have a nation in China that's producing four times the engineers that the United States is. We can't allow that to happen. We need to make those sixty percent who can't read productive citizens, and that's what we're trying to do. So thank you very much, Commissioners, for this wonderful proclamation. I can't thank you enough for the recognition that you're giving us, and also for all our Moonshot Community Action Networks. Some of them had a legal lawyer, they had some other commitments, but I just want to let you know that we deeply appreciate all your doing. So maybe if the rest of you can come on up and join me, I'd appreciate it.
Thank you.
Still agitate, agitate.
Got a whole group here.
Andy, how is the guy? I saw your face.
Because Kathy will take it for you if you want.
He does it all right there.
You don't, I mean, it's up to you.
One-stop shop.
Because if you give her your camera, she'll take it. We'll text you a copy.
I have no idea.
Maybe two rows.
I have no idea. Oh, hey.
Are we good? How are?
I gotta stand behind the tall guy?
Don't.
All right, I'll say moonshot.
Moonshot.
All right, thank you, guys.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair, if I might, if I might say.
Thank you. Continuing with moonshot, Oceanside Rotary is hosting an event, Party for a Cause Island Days, on Saturday, April twenty-ninth, from eleven AM to five PM. That's in Riverside Park. There'll be live music, food trucks, beer, raffles, games, and again, it benefits Moonshot Moment. That's Saturday, April twenty-ninth, eleven to five PM, Riverside Park. Thank you for being here today. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right, Commissioners, moving on. Item six, approval of minutes. We have six A, the regular, I'll take these as a group, six A, regular meeting of January thirty-first, 2023, and six B, the regular meeting of February seventh, 2023. Ms. Jim? Move both.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Fleischer to accept, a second by Commissioner Adams. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed, a motion passes five-zero. Thank you very much. Item seven, informational items. We've got to talk about seven A, though. Seven A, Distinguished Budget Presentation Award. And I see our clerk and some of the clerk's crew down there, and I see our budget director over there. I think y'all need to come and enlighten us on this, so.
Is this another plaque for your Wall of Fame?
Good morning, Commissioners, Kristen Daniels, Budget Director. This is the thirty-second consecutive year we've received the award. And just to let you know, I have some stats here. There are three thousand three hundred and four counties in the U.S. and Canada, and only two hundred and sixty-five received the award. So it is quite an honor to receive the award. Just like to say a big thank you to my team. They work hard on the book every fall. And for anyone who is interested, our book can be found on the Budget Department's website, on the county's website. So thank you for the recognition.
Between our awards that you get along with the clerks' awards we get every year, like the thirty-seven award, where are we gonna hang all these awards? Do we have office space, sir?
We've now also started receiving the triple crown because we are a good team and we qualify for all of the awards that are given, so we get a special award because we both get our awards, so.
We're saving the build-out in Building B for that purpose, sir.
They started giving a plaque with little, the discs, things for each year instead of giving a plaque for each year, so.
They ran out of wall space.
Well, congratulations. Well deserved. Thank you. Next, seven B, District Three, appointee to the Environmental Lands Acquisition Panel. I've made my selection, and many of you know him, local insurance agent, lifelong resident of River County, Calvin Reams. He'll definitely add a lot to the board. He'll have fun, the board will have fun doing what they do, that's for sure. But the reason is, I want to encourage each of y'all to go ahead and get your appointments in, so when we can work on the others, but we want to get this Environmental Lands Action Panel together to move forward. So that's all I got to say about that. Anything else?
So you're encouraging us to have it on the next meeting's agenda.
Awesome. Thank you.
We do that. Thanks for the encouragement.
Deal. All right, Commissioners, next, moving on to the consent agenda. Is there anything that any... Is there anything that any of y'all would like to discuss?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to pull eight R.
Eight R. Anyone else? Seeing none, anybody from the audience have anything they'd like to pull for discussion? All right, seeing none, I'll take the motion.
Miss Chairman, move as amended.
All right, I have a motion as amended by Commissioner Fleischer, second by Commissioner Lor. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, a motion passes five zero. Commissioner Adams, eight R.
Thank you. This is a right-of-way consent agreement for construction of the Trans-Florida Railroad Trail. I think, Phil, this is the final piece that's needed to start that project and I just want to congratulate staff. This is one of the most exciting items I've seen on the agenda in quite some time. I know you and the entire MPO staff have been working on this rail trail project for several umpteen years, it seems like, and this will bring it all the way into the city of Felsmere, a one-point-four mile. So, I know you had to work with the state to get the park to allow that path to be put through there. There was a little bit of maneuvering and finagling that had to happen there, but, and now the FPL part is that last part. So, just, I'm really excited about it. I know it's been a lot of hard work. I'm glad to see it coming to fruition.
Absolutely. We should have a golden spike ceremony when East meets West. Yeah, MPO staff, they didn't come down here for this, but they did a really great job on that finagling that you're talking about and they're actually taking the lead with Public Works Assistance on constructing this last piece. So, it's going to be exciting. You'll be able to ride your bike from the Captain Hiram's to, who's the bar, to somewhere in Felsmere.
There you go. Yeah, yeah. Well, thank you, I just, just.
The Marsh Landing.
Well, if you want to go to the bar, you'd have to go to Willie's. I think that's what he was trying to think of, right?
You'll definitely burn your beer off.
Either way, Swamp Water, there you go. But congratulations, I appreciate it. I think this is fantastic and with that, I move approval.
Isn't the child teacher's house in Felsmere?
No.
Well, thank you.
I'll second that.
I'll take that as a motion.
Yes.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Adams, second by Commissioner Moss. All those in favor, anybody from the public wish to comment on the motion, I'm sorry. Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, a motion passes five zero. Thank you, Mr. and Madam Vice Chairman. All right, next, we're moving on to item nine. This is constitutional officers and governmental agencies. Nine A, Indian River County Tax Collector Carol Jaden Jordan referenced delinquent tax advertising. Madam Tax Collector, glad to see you here today, thanks for coming.
Good morning, thanks for having us. Jordan Abbey, our, there he is, our Director of Taxes has worked on this for a couple of years. You all, I'm sure, have seen the insert with the teeny-tiny font on it that is very important that it be accurate, correct, and delivered properly according to Florida statute. They've made a, they tweaked it just a little bit in two thousand twenty-two, so we're able to give the presentation to you that we would like to go with a different newspaper, Hometown News, which will provide a greater reach at a significant lower cost to the taxpayers. It's based on the estimated number of delinquent parcels that will be advertised and previously we had quoted, or we were quoted, I'm sorry, twenty-nine thousand four hundred dollars for three weekly runs of seven thousand eight hundred newspapers. Our alternate quote with Hometown News, which we're recommending, is sixteen thousand five hundred and twenty-five dollars and that's for three weekly runs of seventeen thousand four hundred and fifty newspapers as well as electronic publications and we would like your approval to do that.
Mr. Chair, a motion approved. Questions for the Tax Collector? Got a motion and a second right here. All right, I have a motion by Commissioner Lor, second by Commissioner Fleischer. Anybody from the public wish to comment on the motion?
Saving money.
Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, passes five zero.
Thank you very much. Our taxpayers will appreciate it and especially those that have come on hard times and might have to deal with the extra cost of this.
Thank you, continue the great, continue the great job as usual.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on to public items. This is a public hearing. Ten A, one, residency restrictions for registered sex offenders. This is legislative in nature and I'll turn it over to the Counselor.
Thank you very much. On September twentieth, two thousand twenty-two, the Board directed the County Attorney's Office to work with the Sheriff's Office on several different matters. On February twenty-first, two thousand twenty-two, the Board directed the County Attorney's Office to schedule a public hearing on the first of these items, which was an ordinance concerning residency requirements or restrictions for sexual offenders. The proposed ordinance maintains the current twenty-five-hundred-foot distance requirements already in our code. Simply, the ordinance was designed to really help define, further define some of the terms in our code, which was going to help enforcement of the code easier for our law enforcement folks. I just want to thank Detective Bridget Sanders, Ryan Butler from the Clerk's Office, William Long from the State Attorney's Office. They were all very helpful in putting this together and identifying the issue and with that, basically, want to recommend that the Board open the public hearing, take any public comments, close the public hearing and vote to approve the ordinance. And with that, I turn it back over to the Chair.
Thank you, Counselor. Commissioners, any question of Dylan?
Motion approved, Chair.
Second, we had to open the public hearing first yet. Any questions? But with that, I'll open the public hearing. Anybody wish to comment on the proposed ordinance? Anybody wish to comment? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Commissioners, your pleasure. I'll take Commissioner Lor, you have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Yes, sir.
Second by Commissioner Fleischer. Anybody wish to comment on the motion? Commissioners, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes five zero. Thank you, Dylan.
Thank you very much.
All right, B, public discussion items. Ten B, one, request to speak from Bill Arjuna Rigby, West Wabaso Progressive Civic League, reference the shared usage of the old Douglas School Building. Mr. Rigby, welcome.
Good morning. I'll be in a few minutes, he had to step out for a few minutes, but I'm going to begin to cover this morning. What we have here is that the Health Department sent us a letter and that letter, they stated that they want us to sign a shared usage. So, we asked them to come before the Board and explain to us what a shared usage is because we don't, we don't know and we're not going to sign anything that we don't know. So, if someone can please explain to us what a shared usage is, we'd be more than applicable or be applicable to sign whatever they want, but we were not going to sign it because we don't know what shared usage is. I don't know, so we wouldn't sign it. No one can tell us what shared usage is? We need to know.
So, Mr. Rigby, I guess that's really a question for you to reach out and meet with the Health Department on. I mean.
I disagree with that, excuse me, I disagree with that. From a managerial standpoint, it's a nightmare. When you're going into an agreement, you're going into a building that we're already into, you're supposed to meet with us. It's not, we chase them down, we're there together. Either somebody's incompetent or it's intentional. When you go into any real estate deal, anything, management get together, we should not be here arguing about getting into a building, out of the building, when you got the Board of the West Wabaso Progressive League here. It does not make sense. Something is going on. Number two, you came here February discussing issues about West Wabaso and the Board is not here? Then we get a complimentary call, I call it, in March. Wabaso should have been there in February. If you could find me on the phone in March, you should have been able to find me in February discussing issues in Wabaso. It just makes sense from a managerial standpoint to be worried about having a place to look for to discuss community business. Doesn't make sense from a managerial standpoint.
All right, I don't know about the February-March issue. All I can say is what I've got in front of me appears to be a pretty short, just one-page Terms and Conditions.
I don't, I really don't like to call names, but we got a call from some people on staff saying, want it be a good idea, want it be a business? That's ultimately, want it be a benefit to Wabaso in March? I have the texts, I have the receipt. This whole ordeal was done in February, but in March, we got a call from some staff folks saying, isn't this a good idea? And my brother asked, would we like to see things, see some of the material before it's done? Oh, this is factual. Let's see something before this is done. Mind you not, this deal has already been cut in February. Something sneaky and snide is going on here when you're discussing West Wabaso issues in February, the Health Department and the Board of the West Wabaso Progressive Civic Club is not here. Doesn't make sense.
So, I will follow that up with, again, I don't know about the February-March issue. I'm going through our minutes from May tenth, two thousand twenty-two. It was my understanding at that time, the Board had discussed the Health Department using the Daisy Hope Center. I've got in the notes that Arjuna Rigby, President of the Civic Club, was there. Bill Rigby, Vice President of the Civic Club, was present at that meeting as well, so.
March, I'm sorry, Ms. Ringo, that was March. After the February, it'd already been made. February, the deal was cut. It was already made. March, we got a call saying it won't be good, I mean, want it be a benefit. I hate to interrupt you, but we got to get the facts lined up, the receipts got to line up.
Okay, I just, I rely upon the minutes that I'm reading from May tenth, two thousand twenty-two.
Mr. Ringo, barring all of that, we are here today to find out what is, the tongue is kind of tied up, I don't get the word out, what is, what is it? What's called? Usage? Shared use. What is shared usage? What is that? Why do we have to sign? The Health Department coming to tell us because we, we sent them a letter asking them to define shared usage. And plus, and plus, we're not a risk, any risk management in that building. So, what is shared usage? That's what we want to know. One day out of the month, one hour. Twelve days. Twelve days out of the year. That's it. After hours, six o'clock.
So, I've got a, what appears to be a facility use agreement. It appears to be three pages long. Two of the pages seem to be just sections where an applicant or some organization fills it out and then there's a one-page Terms and Conditions. I mean, I'm limited in my ability to give legal advice to the Rigbys about the agreement, but it doesn't seem too complicated or lengthy or.
We had asked you last year to table it. All this could have been worked out. We asked you guys to table it. We could have come to the table and worked out the agreement, but it appears to me, my eyeballs, my eye test, is that the Health Department came here without us, discussed something, we're going to request that too, and requested something from this Board. We want to know what it is. What did the Health Department do in our community without us? It happened, I heard all this on the radio station, but they wouldn't even come to us to give a presentation, but they gave it on the radio. I'm like, what's going on? Winter beach and all this stuff? We asked for this stuff without coming to the, without coming to this public arena. All in writing. We even put in a protest. That was ignored. Now, you don't have to legally answer it, but again, that was another opportunity to iron out the wrinkles, just from a management standpoint. And still, we're saying again, what is shared usage?
Mr. Rigby, to me.
And lock the door, you locked the door.
Hold on, I'm certainly no attorney, but to me, shared usage means is that two organizations are going to be in the same building, using it for, using it maybe possibly for the same reasons or different reasons, just as a doctor share a doctor's office, you know, two doctors share a doctor's office, that's, that's shared usage. They're using it for maybe different things and different types of events, different professions, whatever it may be, this is shared usage. And the way I understand it is, you know, Daisy Hope will probably be no more and the Health Department's moving in to provide a service up there and they're using that facility and they would allow the, get for, I'm sorry, the Wabaso West, Wabaso Civic League to come in and use that for their meetings and stuff like that. And the way I understood it is, is all you have to do is sign the agreement, provide proof of insurance and whatever rules that they have in the things such as like no political activity or something like that. I might be missing the point. I don't see where this is difficult. Either you, either you, either you want to use the building or you don't. We're happy to have you use the building. I think the Health Department's happy for you to use the building should you choose I didn't know that, I don't know anything about like what Dylan said, I don't know anything about any phone calls or anything like that. I thought this was worked out with y'all and staff or worked out with y'all and the Health Department? If not, maybe after this meeting, you can get the parties together and y'all can work out what you need to work out. This, maybe I don't know what you're asking, but this doesn't sound like a real complicated matter to me. That's just me.
It is not a complicated matter, but I'm glad you brought to the forefront of the shared usage. In my research of shared usage is that it's this. Number one, is that shared usage mean that I must have access to the code to the building? Number two, also, I must have keys to the building? Number three, is that I must have the same privileges even though the Health Department, it's like, I think it called a hippo, I can't go back there, but the way I'm using, I must have those, and then he said that I must have insurance and all of those other things if it's shared usage. Now, since I am not, I am sharing the building, but I don't have no keys, they let me in and out that building. Number two, I don't have no security code to go in that building, so therefore, I'm not shared, it's not a shared usage in my research. Now, if my research is wrong, please correct me. I'm only there for twelve days out of the year, sometimes eight to ten days. Now, here's my problem with the Health Department. If the Health Department wanted to work with me and you saying to me today is that, Mr. Rigby, if y'all want to go and work that out, why am I here today? Is that the case? Because we sent them a letter asking them, let's sit down and let's discuss what shared usage is. Because if, if shared usage mean also that I'm, I'm at risk. I'm not at risk at anything in that building because number one, there's a sheriff there. Most of the time, we in that building. It's already secure. It's already secured in that building. Number two is this, I do not understand the life of me, why we have to go through this. I don't understand it. If they, I'm saying to the Health Department, I don't know if they're here this morning, I'm saying to them this morning, if there is a problem, let's sit down to the table and iron it out. Why should I have insurance? Don't they kind of have insurance on the building? Why should, now, why are you making me go get insurance out of a building that I have no security? I have no keys? And a sheriff is always there. Why are you asking me to do that? I don't understand.
If I may, there's some fundamental principles of leasehold.
Lease?
Yeah, I mean, you got, I mean, I'm new to the controversy, but I'm just looking at the May fourth agenda item. I mean, I mean, there was a leasehold on the property that was granted to the Health Department. They now are the leaseholder of the property. If you're going to use a room in the building, they have to grant you a license or other permissive use of the property and they have apparently through the state criteria upon which you must comply, which as Dylan said, seems to be fairly standard in the usage of government buildings as a licensee. And with that comes some obligations to provide insurance and some basic risk management. I think you're more concerned about the decision that was made back in May when historically you were, the league was part of a triangular lease arrangement. That's, that was terminated back in May. So, I think that's where you're, it seems to me, just with a fresh look at it, that you're not happy with that decision. But as it stands now, the Health Department is the tenant. The tenant has the license and rights to use it. They may grant in the, in the form of a sublease or license, permissive use of that facility, but the state has criteria upon which they can do that. And I think that's the process that they're asking you to engage in, but I think you're more concerned with the overall umbrella arrangement that was made back in May. Am I, am I off there, sir?
What I'm concerned about today is this. When we, when this first started here, I remember very vividly, I was over that mic over there and I think Ms. Adams called Mrs. Swanson back to the mic, if I can remember. And she asked Ms. Swanson, what does she have to say about it? Okay, Ms. Swanson said that it was a question asked about us having certain type of performance in the building. Ms. Swanson stated that at that time, she did not know what was what. She would have to look into it and get back with. She would have to look into it and, and get back with the attorney, attorney. That's what she said. You don't have to, if you don't believe it, go back and, and look at the tape or read the minutes. And that, and, and in that regard, the question was asked also. They said, well, will there be a problem if you're going in and out of that building? The answer in the background, I don't know who answered it, they said, no. Now, here in 2023 this morning, or back in March of this year, he'll be back again and say, because I asked the question, will there be a problem six months off, I mean, six months or a year from here, from now? They said, no. Now, today, we have a problem with the Health Department. Now, here's the kicker. We was told that they didn't have a lease, right in this chamber.
Look at the tape.
You said they didn't have a lease. You said you was just giving them, giving them a place to have it to the Health Department like you did over in Dylan B. Now, this morning, you come up with a, with a whole different scenario to us and say, look, now, we, we have given them a lease. Now, 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 here's what I'm saying. You can't usurp us by the Health Department and say, well, we're not going to, you, what, what we're going to do here this morning is that, we're going to give them a lease now. But before, uh, we came before you, before, there was no lease. Now, this morning, you tell me you're leasing this property to the Health Department. What is going on?
Yeah, something's...
No, they, they have the permissive use of the property. They're asking you for a facility use agreement so that you can use it for the purpose that you want to use it for.
I understand, man.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't know what further to do with this, looking at my board. I mean, this is a debate between the Health Department and the Rigbys. It was very clear to me, reading through the minutes from May 10th, 2022, that there were no, that were not going to be any political events allowed at meetings at this facility. That was a part of...
That's not a part of that meeting. That's just what we do. That's how we stand.
Well, Chairman O'Brien received confirmation from County Department of Health Officer Miranda Swanson that the political events, including candidate forums, were not currently allowed at the Health Department's current site. The same prohibition would apply to the Daisy Hope location. I'm just reading from the minutes from May 10th, 2022. The Rigbys were both there, as indicated by the minutes. I, I don't, the, the facility use debate is really one between the Health Department and the Rigbys and otherwise, as Mr. Zito stated. Very appropriately, it seems like just a relitigation of the decision the Board made in May of 2022. I don't know what else to do.
Let's go back then, if you want to go back. You said you got rid of us because of default of event. And we've never done a thing with Daisy Hope since Mr. uh, Zito wants to go back. Default event, we don't know anything about that. What is that? Because I'm going to share something with you now. If you got rid of us and them off of default of event, guess what? We got to come back with the same thing you've done with them. Because under, you, you have to treat us just like you treat them. You have to. If you're getting federal and state dollars, if you got rid of me now on default of event, just like them, we've got to come back just the same. Do your research, the same.
Mr. Rigby and Mr. Rigby.
Wow.
Do y'all want to use the building for your meeting purposes and stuff?
We want to use it.
Do you want to? I just simple question, yes or no?
Yes, we do.
You do, okay? I suggest you get with the Health Department and, and y'all work it out on this. Because the Health Department, listen to me, this is our property, our building. We have a chance to do with it what you want. We don't need y'all's permission, okay? We don't need anybody's permission. It's our building. We can do what we want. We have chose to lease that building out to the Health Department. Like our administrator says, they are the leasie. They have the rights and privileges to it. If you don't want to meet there and you don't want to meet with them, then don't do it. As far as I'm concerned, this is between you and them, and as far as I'm concerned as chairman, this conversation is over with.
Yeah, I'm going to say...
It's over with. We're over with, we're done.
I'm going to say this...
We're done.
I'm going to say this before, because I want this part of the record now.
If you want to talk about this with staff, set up a meeting with Mr. Zito or Mr. Rango and set up a meeting with the Health Department, but as far as this board, we're done.
No, sir, I want, I have a right to speak. You can say...
You do have a right to speak and speak, but I'm telling you, this conversation is done.
I want it on record. You're saying to me today is that it's over, it's a county building. You're saying to me also that you, you gave them a lease. I want this on record, that the day that we spoke on it, on the record, you said, this commission said that you did not lease the building to them. What you did was that you, you give them a place to have their business, just like you give everybody else. Now, today, you're coming back with a different story and say that now they have a lease. I'm saying this, that is not what you said to us on that day. And if you're saying it's over, it's over. Please, Madam Clerk, make that part of the record because I'm coming back in this chamber again. Because they're not going to do that to me.
I understand, we're done. We leased it to them.
No, we're not done.
Work, work it out with the Health Department.
We are not done.
Thank you. Commissioners, with that, we're going to take a 10-minute break.
All right.
All right, we'll call the meeting, call the meeting back to order. All right, let's move on to 12, Departmental Matters, Community Development 12A1, Consideration of Roadway Jurisdictional Transfers to the Florida Department of Transportation. Mr. Mattson.
Phil Mattson, Community Development Director, and I think you've got about 60 items on this agenda, and I don't think there's a more mundane sounding, more boring item on here than this one, from the sound of the title, so listen to it. Consideration of Roadway Jurisdictional Transfers to Florida DOT. Let me tell you, this probably has the biggest financial implication of an item we've had in years, and it's a very good thing, and I think there's, there's a lot to it. Ultimately, this isn't the end, but we seek your feedback on it at this time, and we seek authorization to continue with something that we've been working on for quite a long time. So let me take you through the slides and show you what this is, and don't worry, as boring as it sounds, you've got plenty of sizzle coming up on the next item. So, okay, so the MPO Transportation Improvement Program has $400 million in TIP items funded over five years, and our major projects, these are no surprises to anybody, Oslo Road Interchange, Widening County Road 510, something that would have been our responsibility, Sebastian Inlet Causeway Replacement, and so forth. So it's a big source of partnership, and you break that 400 million out to our 60,000 residences, and it comes out to a couple of thousand, like $7,000 per household. So it's really quite a bit of infrastructure provided to each of the residents of Indian River County from DOT. And some of the stuff they've done in the past, high-profile stuff, like we've mentioned earlier, TransFlorida Rail Trail, GO Line, Brian put this together, he likes, he likes my Beatles period on my haircut here, from 2012 that was, but the GO Line itself gets 25% of its funding from DOT, and that amounts to about $1 million a year in operating subsidies. Over the 20 or so years we've been running a fixed route, it's about 20 million bucks. And they've also helped us out with the fleet purchases, they provide a soft match for that, construction money and so forth. In terms of state roads in Indian River County, this is the first thing that struck me when I got here, because remember, I, I worked in a transportation environment before I got here, 2001, we have three. There are something like 20 interchanges in Broward County, and all of them except for Cypress Creek Road are state roads. So you compare that, we've got three state roads here, they've got 20 just at the interchanges in Broward, and most of the other counties are like that. We really don't have a lot of state ownership of our roadway network, and that has a lot of implications. That's kind of the first thing that struck me here. And here are the implications. So on county roads, we pay for maintenance and resurfacing, and these could be considerable costs. I mean, this is everything from mowing the lawns and trimming the trees, to fixing the potholes, restriping, traffic signalization, maintenance operations, et cetera. Our capacity improvements could be funded through partnerships where we have to come up with a match, 66th Avenue County Road, that's an example. Sometimes they'll give us a capacity project, and probably our biggest coup was getting them to take over County Road 510. State roads, DOT pays for everything, and there is a lot more money available, because the state law prevents the transfer of state money onto county roads. So DOT has to use a federal silo of funding when they want to do something like County Road 510. So they have more potential money to use, and they're obligated to do all the work. So we'll take a look at some of the roads here, and these are all slides you've, I think every one of you have seen as an MPO member, and the midway point between the 192 Causeway and the Wabaso Causeway is somewhere right around County Road 510. And if you look at the demographics in that area, this area of Southern Brevard and this area in Northern Indian River have about the same population, but they also have resorts and hotels and a lot of other trip generators. So you've got about 5,000 people on both sides of the divide at the county line, and a lot more pedestrian, a lot of tourist traffic and that sort of thing. So what you end up doing is, you have basically Brevarders using an Indian River County bridge, and it's all paid for by Indian River County, all of the maintenance, all of the obligation and so forth. So that's a patently inequitable situation, and something I've been working with DOT on for quite a long time. When you take a look at interchanges, that's another one, we only have two in the county, finally we're getting our third. Our adjacent counties, Brevard and St. Lucie, have 16 and 11 respectively. So if you divide the number of people who get crammed into the one interchange you got, we have 73,000 people per interchange, that's just our population, not counting Southern Brevard, they're down in the 20,000 or 30,000. So in the event of an emergency or an evacuation or something, you know, we, we have a funnel effect, so. There are a few inequities here, and we've been working on these for a very long time, this is what the interchange density looks like in Brevard versus us. So as they do every decennial census, DOT considers what kind of roadway functions are being performed by what roadway and what level, and what's their appropriate level of involvement, and after much discussion, they are amenable to taking over County Road 510 and Oslo Road, in part because there are interchanges involved on both of these, in part because, at least in County Road 510s, it goes intracoastal to 95, in part because they buy my argument that we're paying to benefit maybe 15% of the traffic that's not even generated here in our own county. So that's the background, and there'll be a lot of follow-up, and ultimately, an agreement where we can make a determination of whether or not we are amenable to transferring these roads to, to DOT. So this is just sort of to set the table for you and let you know what's going on with it. These are issues I've discussed with the MPO for a long time in the past. Here are the benefits, and the downside, I really can't think of too many, but A, they get eligible for state gas tax funding, that's about 50% of all the action at DOT, and the action there is $7 billion total, because about half their money comes from state gas tax. Could potentially accelerate construction schedule for roads like Oslo and 510. FDOT will assume all maintenance responsibilities, it's no longer a Public Works issue, and FDOT is responsible for futuring resurfacing, and so they're going to resurface jobs. And according to the FDOT manual, a four-lane divided roadway is $1.4 million per mile to main, to resurface. So if you look at the 12.75 miles of those two transferred roadways, this will save the county $18 million in resurfacing money in the future. So it's a significant savings to the county. I really got to say, I was taken by surprise by Oslo Road, and I think Public Works has been talking and negotiating with them, you know, on the side, on how Oslo is carrying a lot of traffic from St. Lucie, just sort of like the argument that we've been noticing all along on, on 510. So those are the benefits, and we do recommend that you authorize staff to begin the process of, of taking back a transfer agreement. I guess one downside would be permitting for access to those roads would go through DOT instead of us. That actually might be an upside, depending on the developer, they may prefer to work with DOT, and DOT definitely has deeper pockets and stuff, and could probably, probably amenitize their access, but it's not local. So that'd be about the only thing I can think of, that, that wouldn't be, the reason we wouldn't want it, you know, it's like a guy coming over and saying, hey, I'll mow your lawn for free every day, how about that, you know, you know, what's the catch? In this case, I don't think there's a real catch, it's just an equity issue with us compared to other counties. So that sets the background, I'm welcome to questions on it, Brian's probably even more acquainted with this than I am, and Andy, they've been working hard on this, so. Guys got questions?
Commissioners, any questions to Phil or Brian?
No.
It's been done before, and I think it's a great idea.
My only question Phil answered, which, what would be the downside, so there is none, really.
Yeah, I mean, we'd lose some local control, I guess. To me, I mean, I would, I would rather give every road to the county, that's an estate if they take it, but, you know, there, that's, these road jobs are mind-blowing how expensive they are, you know, you're looking at $18 million just to resurface, and for a county of 160,000 people, that's, that's a big, that's a big load to come up with, so, you know, I, I think if it's serving a state function, a regional function, an evacuation, meets their criteria, and they're amenable, you know, I, I think it's a good idea.
Yeah, I think it's a, I think it's a really good idea, as a matter of fact, I caught it by accident, I caught, went down to your office, maybe see you weren't there, and I got to talking to the MPO guy, you know, and, and he filled me in on this, it's, I was like shocked by it, it was very, very positive, and, yeah, I don't see how you can say no.
Yeah, it's, it's something we've talked about with them at MPO meetings and stuff in the past, and, you know, they, it was a big first step when County Road 510 was taken over for its widening and construction by the state, but transferring it to the state will enable them to open the spigots up with state money, and we might actually see that a little quicker, so that's, that's another upside. All right.
Phil?
Rich might be very sad.
Rich? No? Okay.
Hate his roads.
Yeah, yeah, he's really depressed.
Phil?
I'll counsel him.
Commissioner Fleischer.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. How amenable is FDOT? I know you have deep and rooted understanding and relationships, how amenable are they?
They're doing this?
Yes.
They came to us with a proposal, I think this is, I think it's probably a done deal if we don't put any obstacles up.
So how, how long of a process is this, that we can?
It will take less time than widening a road, I could tell you that, probably a year, six months?
Six months?
Yeah. Yeah, they'll probably, I think the next step, based on this consensus here, will be to bring the agreement back, run it by legal, Dylan, make sure there's no Trojan horse in it or anything that, you know, works against us in any way, open it up to public feedback, but I, I don't expect a lot of issues.
We have to identify all roads?
No, no, it's only two. They're only taking two at this point, Oslo and, and 510, and a piece of 512, 510 where it continues to 512.
No possibility of add-ons?
Oh yeah, sure, I mean, the door's always open, you know, these are the two that I think are the most tangible. It gets a little complicated when you're talking about roads that they've committed to widening now, because they take over those roads while they're widening it, and then give it back. So that's a temporary transfer, so yes, I think we could probably work them into doing the temporary to permanent on the other roads that they're doing for us, so we'll see, stay tuned.
Stay tuned, because I'll have to reserve my thoughts for a later item.
Okay. I'm done.
Any more questions?
No.
Move approval.
Thank you.
Any more, any more questions?
That's what we need to do.
Yeah, I, I think that would be a big step, and we could report that back, DOT was expecting some sort of action today, before they start engaging in the whole legal process of generating paperwork, and then they'll bring that back.
You want to go call them now?
The who?
You can go call them now, right after the vote. There you go.
What's it, 954?
Thank you, Phil.
Thank you.
All right, Commissioners, any further questions? With that, I'll accept the motion. You have a motion?
Commissioner Fleischer motioned.
Commissioner Fleischer made the motion, who says the second? You have the second, Commissioner Adams says the second. Anybody from the public wish to comment on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 5-0. Phil, Brian, the MPO guy, good job.
That's excellent.
Good job. All right, next, we'll move on to 12A2, Application for Federal Transit Administration Grant for Low or No Emission Buses, and we'll lead it off with the MPO guy.
Yes, good morning, I'm Brian Freeman, MPO Staff Director, also joining me here are Karen Deagle and Chris Stevenson with the Senior Resource Association. As you know, SRA operates on behalf of the county, both the GO Line Fixed Route System and the Community Coach Door-to-Door System. They really have the presentation for you, I just have three numbers to keep in mind that, while they're listening to their presentation. The first one is 1.2 million, and that's the number of passenger trips that were provided last year on the GO Line, so 1.2 million. The second number is one, and that is the ranking for Indian River County in the state of Florida for operating expense compared to every other transit system in the state. We are the lowest operating cost per passenger in the state of Florida. And the third number is zero, and that is the cost to Indian River County for the capital expenses associated with the public transportation system. And of those capital expenses, the most significant is probably the buses and other vehicles that are used, and, you know, that, that does get expensive with the replacement of those vehicles, and so there's a new FTA grant program that we are going to be hoping to submit an application for, and I think I'm going to let Karen and Chris cover the details for that program.
Thank you. Good morning, I'm Karen Deagle, CEO of the Senior Resource Association, and I kind of feel like I'm following Jimmy Fallon on late night show. Oh, okay. We do have a presentation for you today on electric vehicles, and we're, we're asking for your guidance, your hopeful approval to move forward to apply for this grant from FTA, so if we could have the, thank you. You got it? Okay, go ahead. So low zero emission, low zero emission vehicles, that would mean electric vehicles, propane, CNG, and why go low zero emission? Legislation, they have, back in 2021, there's the Green Bus Act, requires all buses purchased with FTA dollars to be, with the administration funds, to be low or zero emission, beginning October 1st, 2035. So that means that come 2035, we will not be able to purchase gas diesel buses using FTA dollars, and again, like Brian said, that's how we are purchasing our, our fleet currently. Obviously, this is driven by environmental reasons, the greenhouse gas, and there are efficiencies, great efficiencies, if we were to move to the low no emissions, which is operating cost savings with fuel and maintenance. So we did consult with some experts, Chris and I did not come up with all of this ourselves. This is a nonprofit organization that works with transit systems nationally to look at their system, to determine whether or not it would be appropriate to transition to low no emission, and a lot of our information that we're providing you today has been recommended from Calstart. So currently, the GO Line has 20 buses in our fleet, we've got the six heavy duties, we've got nine medium duty freight liners, and then five cutaways. What Calstart has recommended, if we were to change to electric vehicles, would be to invest in 25 vehicles as listed. These 25 vehicles, the reason why it would be an increase is because, of course, battery life, we, we would have to change up, have, have spare vehicles intermittently to, what do you call it, charge, recharge while the buses are, are down. So we would also have to have installation, speaking of charging station, installation of charging stations, recommendation is to have 13 overnight chargers, that would be at the Transit Facility and 43rd, and then in addition to that, have six opportunity chargers at the transfer hub. The overnight chargers, 13 of them, we've got 25 buses, the 13 actually, each one charges two buses at a time. It is an overnight charge, it is a slower charge, and we did research on the overnight charge, it costs about $24 per vehicle at night to charge. The six opportunity charges, though, are the quick charge, they would be the ones at the hubs, so that when the, the buses en route lose their, their battery, or lose their charge, they can have a quick charge, and it's, it's about three miles per minute of charging. So let's talk about the, the buses, the routes, and, and how it all works. The, the buses themselves, on any given route, during the day, we do 13 headways. Each, each route does 13 headways, which means going from point A to point B, back to point A, except Route 15, which is the one that heads down to the college, the Indian River State College, it only does eight headways each day. So the heavy duty, the, the big buses, I call big buses, the Gilligs, they have a range, a battery range of 250 miles before they need to be recharged. The medium buses have a range of approximately 140 miles per charge. So as we look at, we're just going to look at the main hub at this point, which is on 17th Street, these are the routes that come into the main hub, and when we're, the, the, let's look at Route 2, which is the route, it, it's one of the, the big buses, it's circled with the dotted lines, that, that indicates that it is one of the Gilligs, one of the big ones. So on Route 2, it does 155 miles that, each day. So it is under the 250 miles of the charge of that battery, so it could run all 13 headways, it could run the whole day without being recharged. However, if you look at Route 3, which is a medium duty bus, the mileage on the medium bus, it's 183 miles that day, it could only do nine headways, because the charge on a medium bus is only 140 miles, so it would, at, at approximately nine headways after that, it would need to be recharged. We would then have to bring a spare in, the spare would then take over and run that route while this one is being recharged. Thus, at the, the bottom, you'll see, we need three spares for the main hub, at the mall, we would need three, at the IG Center, one spare, and North County Hub, four spares. So the total buses that we're talking about, the 25, would include all that's on this, on, on this slide. So obviously, the upfront capital cost is what the big ticket price is, that's where the greatest cost is, and that is what is being provided through FTA. The operational cost of the vehicles is where the great savings going electric would be. The electric vehicles are considerably less, because the electric, they, we're not using gas, so the gas or the, the fuel consumption is, cost is less, as is the maintenance cost. Just kind of give you an idea of the, the cost savings, so for the first one, the turtletops that we have, their useful life on a turtletop, us, is five years currently, and that's the diesel. So if we were to replace with a electric, the F450, for example, the useful life is nine years, you can see the purchase price, the difference, that's considerable, from 90,000 to 300. But look at the fuel cost and the maintenance cost, fuel especially, considerably less, I think it's around 80%, and the maintenance cost is about 50%. And again, on the freight liners, now, the useful life on the freight liners and the Gillig, they're the same, but again, cost, the initial cost is, is much greater, the capital cost, but again, the, the savings for fuel and maintenance adds up to a whopping number of about $732,000, and that's for the entire fleet for the year. That would be an operational cost savings for the, the system, which would mean that we would be able probably to provide more service, maybe more frequency, more hours, so that's a direct savings to, to us. So that's a direct savings to us. So additional positives to go electric would be, of course, we're in line with the state of Florida's electrification plan. The cost of the electric vehicles, they are going to continue to go down as time progresses. And the battery ranges are going to increase over time. And in fact, just in the eight months or more that we've been studying, doing this project and studying it, the battery life for the Gillig has improved about 100 miles. And then again, of course, we can look at our current fleet and use the value of our current fleet possibly to help compensate for some of the purchase of the EVs. So what system changes would need to happen for our transit system? Electric vehicle tools, we would need to purchase for our maintenance facility, we are looking at probably under 5,000 for that. Our fleet mechanics definitely would need additional training, a lot of electrical training. The vehicle operators definitely would need additional EV training. It is, and if anybody has driven an electric vehicle or been in one, you know that it's a little different feeling. And facility modifications at 43rd, we would have to install, of course, the chargers, there would be no buildings having to be built, but there would be the chargers that would need to be installed on site. So this is the funding aspect. So currently, we purchase, as Brian explained, we purchase our vehicles through our 5307 and 5339 grants. They are through the federal, the FTA. And currently, we have in our, what I'll call our bucket, over the years, we will receive probably about 500,000 capital dollars each year to put towards our fleet or capital improvement. And right now, in our bucket, we have about 1.8 million allocated for bus replacement. Each year, we add to it from these grants. And, but the great part about this whole program, and one of the reasons that I'm kind of pushing forward on this, is because the federal government has a lot of dollars that are available for changing, transitioning over to EV. In 2023, they have allocated over 1.1, almost 1.2 billion dollars nationally to do this. This is the Federal Low No Emissions Competitive Grant, there is no local match, there is a match, but that match can be covered through toll roll, toll revenue credits that we can receive. So again, this program, this change, the overall cost of the capital would not be a burden on the local public. So, I always like to say, I never want to be the first, especially in this program. These are a number of the transit systems in the state of Florida that have already transitioned or in the process of transitioning to low no emission. And, but again, I don't want to be the last either, because the dollars are available, and I don't know how long they're going to be available. So it's an opportune time for our community to move forward, be progressive, and be forward-thinking on this program, so that in the future, it doesn't burden us. So we just got through, excuse me, we just got through talking about the GoLine, which is our mass transit. We also have the paratransit system, which is the Community Coach. We have 18 vehicles in our fleet. Right now, the vehicles, the smaller vehicles, the batteries for the smaller vehicles, the ranges are very limited, so we are not recommending going EV, electric vehicle, for our paratransit. We are recommending going low, not the no emissions, but the low emissions, which would be the propane. Propane vehicles, they are available on state contract, we can use the same funding that we receive currently to purchase these vehicles. And in fact, kind of a great thing that we've just come upon through, or FTA has approved, is that we can use the federal dollars that we get to actually refurbish our current buses to propane, to a low emission, that's part of the grant process. So it'd be, it'd be an easy turnover. Again, looking at the cost of ownership and cost savings, where the cost savings is with propane, it's not so much with the maintenance, it is more with the fuel cost. And not as significant as the EV, but certainly something to take a look at. With the propane, we're looking at about 46,000, 47,000 a year, changing over. There isn't a great deal difference in the purchase price of it, and again, because of the fact that we could actually refurbish, we could refurbish, say, four vehicles for the same price as we purchased two. And so that would be a helpful, helpful for the funding part of it. System changes for propane, the fueling for the propane, we would have it done on a nightly basis, done by a provider who comes in to the, to our property to fill each of the buses up. In fact, that's what the school district is doing currently. We could look at a fuel depot on site at a later time as well. Shop tools, there's no special tools that are required, and no shop upgrades required for propane. And of course, there should, there would be some fleet mechanics training involved with that. So here's our current asset management plan. Over the next four years, we are going to be having to replace a lot of our vehicles, which is another reason why we want to take a look at this program now. Just in 2025, we're looking at 10 new vehicles that we have to, we have to replace, another five in 26, and in 27, four, and then another six in 28. So again, opportune time to do this. So the total potential investment, what we would likely be applying for would be 20.8 million, that is the total cost to change, to go electric for our mass transit, the GoLine, to change our propane, or our Community Coach to propane, and to install the chargers as well. And again, that is 20.8 million from the feds, that is not a local request. So, today, I'm actually, I'd like to, I'm seeking approval to apply for the grant for funds for the bus replacement. Again, we want to transition this fleet at no additional cost to Indian River County. If we were fortunate enough to be awarded that grant, and by the way, the grant is, we have to have it in by April 13th, so we're going to be working on it real quick if we get this approval. We should know by this summer, and that if that happens, and how much it is, we'll determine on what we'll call Phase Two, is figuring out the total transition and how we're going to manage this. And, and again, this, you know, a big point of this is that we are going to be saving a lot of operational dollars if we do transition. So thank you, and any questions?
Commissioners, any questions of Karen and staff?
Ms. Chairman. I want to thank you for the presentation today, as well as the in-depth presentation yesterday. It was very well put together, and it opens the eyes of what the true concerns are in this transition. It's a very, it's unfortunate about the federal mandate and guidelines, but fortunately, it's not an unfunded mandate, and I'm very excited about the opportunity to be able to get those dollars to be able to allow us to transition. I was probably the least fond of EVs as far as personal use, until some family members got them, and yes, I'm on the list for when the trucks become available. But I did have some concern about the logistics for the commercial application, the bus line, to be able to endure the lengthy routes, and I do appreciate, and the public should know that you're already working on those logistics to ensure that there'll be a seamless transition. So, job well done. I don't know if we want to have any, I'm sure everybody has comments, and I hope the public does, because it's all about the public, good service to the public. And if they have not had the opportunity to ride in an electric vehicle, they're missing something, because the experience is completely different. Again, just a few years ago, I thought they were just glorified golf carts. But all the amenities plus can be provided with these vehicles, and will be satisfying the federal request, or as they say, mandate. So, I'm very eager to support the application process. I hope we get it. I understand that we do have, there may be some other collateral cost concerns that will be offset by the tremendous savings that we'll have in fuel expense. And I appreciate you expanding into those possibilities to make sure that you've provided plenty of oversight to reduce our fears as well, and concerns. So.
Thank you.
Ms. Chair, you know, when we're ready, we just, I'd like to move forward to have the process begin.
I'll take that as a motion, but do we even have any other further comments?
I'll be happy to second it.
I would tell you that actions speak louder than words, and with what the SRA and GoLine has done over the years, being the most efficient in the state, is awesome. I wouldn't, I think I've said this before, and they've heard me say it, who would have thought that we'd have a million riders in Indian River County in one year? I mean, it still blows my mind, you know, being born and raised here, to say, we have public transportation, over a million people using Indian River County. Okay. That's true. So it's just amazing. As I told you yesterday, I'm not sold, I don't know if I'd go buy an electric pickup truck right now, but that's just, that's just, that's just me right now. But in a bus, in this application for what it's used for, I think it's a great application. And I think it's the trend, I think it's what we're going to have to go to, whether we want to or not. And I think it's time to make that move, and I appreciate your presentation, it was well, well done, just like everything that y'all do there, and I appreciate it, and I support the motion and the second, but we'll take any further comment, Commissioner Moss?
Just wanted to thank you for being so thorough yesterday and today. And my questions were answered yesterday, so thank you.
Is your resistance about the EVs, or you're not thoroughly convinced that you can't get an 8-track player in them?
I don't know enough about them yet, that's probably why I'm not sold on it yet, I can't like plan my trip to go get a charging station, you know, I'm just not in that mode yet, so, but, but I'm not, I'm not opposed to them, they got, they say the new pickup trucks that have more horsepower than they do with, and more torque than the...
Absolutely.
Than the gas-powered ones, so it's pretty awesome, so. Any further comments, anything? Any further comments? Okay. I have a motion by Commissioner Fleischer, second by Commissioner Adams. Anybody in public wish to comment on the motion? Seeing none, Commissioners, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. Go for it.
Thank you.
All right, thank you so much. All right, next, moving on to 12G. Public Works, 12G1, the Florida Department of Transportation Small County Outreach Program, better known as SCOP acronym, supplemental agreement number one in resolution for construction, milling and resurfacing, and construction engineering inspection, CEI services of County Road 603, Indian River Boulevard, from Merrill Barber Bridge to 53rd Street. Mr. Spurka.
Commissioners, Rich Spurka, Public Works Director. Back in March, the board approved an agreement with FDOT for funding of 3.369 million dollars, part of the overall project of 4.9 million that the board awarded back in July of 2023. FDOT has now come up with another, almost $500,000 to apply to this project, so they're going to basically increase their participation by 500,000. So with that, the project is moving forward, I wanted to address the board with bike lanes. This project was, took some heat, because we could only put five-foot bike lanes during the design, and we had this conversation as part of the board agenda item. Staff was able to look at the project overall, we were able to put six-foot bike lanes with double lines on this roadway, we did some narrowing, we figured out a way to do it. So I wanted the board to know, and the bike community to know, we did look at this hard, like we said we would, and we went ahead and we were able to do this. I can't do this on every project, but I wanted, I want everybody to know that Public Works is a proponent of bike lanes, and we will continue to look as best we can and weigh the costs and how we can get there. So I just wanted the board to know, we were able to do that, I think it's going to be a big safety feature for the bike lanes. With that, staff recommends that the board approve the Small County Outreach Program Supplemental Agreement Number One, the resolution, and authorize the chair to execute the agreement.
Commissioners, any questions of Mr. Spurka? Commissioner Moss?
I just wanted to say thank you very much for looking into widening the bike lanes. I know that that's a very serious concern, and, you know, safety first, so thank you for looking at that, and for being able to allow them to be widened, I really appreciate that. And I'll move to approve.
Rich, yeah, thanks for doing that, that's pretty awesome, I know that was a big discussion we had about this whole area, and I think that's definitely a star, and you got us capped for this, for doing this, whatever you could do. All right, Commissioners, any further questions, staff? I have a motion by Commissioner Moss, second by Commissioner Law, anybody from the public wish to comment on the motion? Seeing none, Commissioners, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes five zero. Good job.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to item 13, County Attorney's Matters 13A, offer of judgment for a parcel of right-of-way located at 6665th Street, Bureau Beach, owned by Harish Indipty Sedwani, and Counselor. I'm going to turn it over to Bill DeBrau. Mr. DeBrau.
Good morning, Commissioners. Bill DeBrau, on behalf of the County Attorney's Office. Today, we have an offer of judgment proposed to be made to the Sedwani's for their parcel of right-of-way and stormwater pond needed for Phase Two of the 66th Avenue Improvement Project. The parent parcel is a little better than 19 acres, the gross, that would be the gross acreage, the net acreage would be a little less, about 18 and a half acres. There's .91 acres of right-of-way that is encumbered by the existing 66th Avenue pavement and shoulder that is included in the rough legal description of the Sedwani property, but it's practically unusable unless, you know, you're going to drive a car on it, and the county has maintained it for several, for many, many years. So we're not including that in the valuation for everything today. The Sedwani's purchased this property back in 2004 for $760,000, or about $39,000 per acre. In order to go ahead and get the needed improvements, we filed suit against the Sedwani's back in 2020. In December of 2020, we entered into an agreed order of take, where we paid them almost $315,000 for the 6.9 acre properties that we needed, about two and a half acres for the retention pond, about four and a half acres for the right-of-way that was needed. And that will be a credit as we move forward to complete the suit against the Sedwani's. We hired Chris Mafara, who is a seasoned appraiser, as far as eminent domain testimony, he's testified on both sides of the street, both for landowners and for government entities. He came up with a valuation of the property, taken at $379,500, almost $380,000. He had a valuation of the property at the land value, he opined at $31,000 per acre. The Sedwani's appraiser is drastically different, the land valuation he assigned was $100,000 per acre. He said that there were severance damages needed, and cost to cure needed of almost $900,000, because there would have to be 90,000... because there would have to be 90,000 cubic feet of fill brought in to fill the remaining 11 or 12 acres of property to prevent flooding. Obviously, we don't agree with this assertion. All of the other properties along 66th Avenue have the same type of improvements that are going to be made to this parcel. We've had no complaints of any flooding or anything like that. So obviously, there's a large difference between our valuation of about $380,000 and their valuation of the property is about 1.8 million. One of the ways that we can try and cut back on the costs is to extend an offer of judgment. In this case, we would go ahead and make an offer of judgment to the Sedwani's. If they refuse the offer of judgment and go to trial, the county would not be responsible and they go to trial and they would get a verdict that would not exceed our offer. The county would not be required to pay their expert witness fees and costs from 30 days after that offer of judgment were made. So the depositions, the trial testimony, and all those things would not fall back on the county so long as they don't beat the offer of judgment. If they take the offer of judgment, we go ahead and figure out the existing costs and attorney's fees, and the case is concluded just as it naturally would be. Staff got together with outside counsel, Bill Donie, the County Attorney's Office, and Public Works. We arrived at a figure of $485,000 to make as an offer of judgment. As I said, this will be extended to the Sedwani's and we will see what they have to say with it. That's staff's recommendation is to direct outside counsel to make the offer of judgment and proceed with the case, hopefully mediation and be able to settle it there. So if there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Any questions, or counsel?
Counselor, do you recall any time how in the past, I know you've gone through a lot with 66th Avenue, we've ridden that same storm where the offers have been or the understanding appraisals have been so disparuous?
Not one with this big of a difference. You know, the 90,000 cubic yards of dirt is a new one. To get to the $100,000 price for property, their appraiser used some commercial properties, some residential properties, some RS6-zoned property. I mean, obviously, it appears to a person experienced in eminent domain that they're using comparables to drive up the cost. I mean, to try and get the biggest bang for their client.
And this is agriculturally-zoned property?
A1 agriculturally-zoned, one unit per five acres. So they would have two buildable lots in the after condition. In the before condition, they would have had four.
The reason why I ask is because I could see that this will probably carry through to, depending on how their response is to mediation and then ultimately?
We are discussing mediation dates as of this morning. So we're looking at a mediation possibly in April or early May. Just got those emails in this morning.
And since the numbers are so disparuous, again, just anticipate it carrying through to the higher level?
And if you can recall, mediation can sometimes be a very educational basis for both sides. I mean, when we, I think it was Dr. Miranda on 69th
Yes.
laid out their proposals as far as how their evaluation was arrived at, and it made sense. And so we were able to work it out and settle the case that way. Will something like that happen in this case? I don't know. We'll have to sit down and talk about it. And that's where the mediator earns his money.
And this one is raw land?
This is raw land unimproved. The only improvements are trees, fencing, and there's a couple of flow wells that are there that will have to be capped, that the county has already capped the well that's on the property that we acquired already in the agreed order of take.
This was formerly citrus land?
At one point, I think it was, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioners, any further questions?
Mr. Chair, Mr. DeBrau with the 379.5. And then I think you said you met with staff and some others and you came up to the 485. How did that happen?
If we would go to trial, our testimony would be that the value of the property is at the 379.5 point. We took into account the wide disparity in the amounts that a jury could find, that maybe some fill might be necessary, that more severance damages were shown, you know, a lot of different things that could happen at trial. You want to give yourself a buffer to be able to work something with and still try and make it an incentive for the other side to take a look at and to consider. That once we offer this money, it's a sure thing. That's the, if they say yes, they're going to get their check for 485.
Yeah, anything further?
No.
Yeah, that seems like a, I think since I've been on the board, that's the biggest disparity by far that I've seen.
I would agree.
I don't know if for you.
It is the largest.
That's a pretty wide gap. So something's not right there. We've been pretty good doing everything we've done. Our history shows that. We've been applying the O'Brien rule. Apparently, this didn't fly in this case. But, I mean, we've used that time and time again. It seems to be worked pretty efficiently. Yeah, I'm, I don't know what else to add other than I'll go with what Counselor adds, things we should do. I think that's the proper avenue to take because that is way too much gap between parties on that. So, and what you said, you know, you go from 370, you go to 485, that's pretty good for that amount of property. So, all right. Commissioner Fleischer, you have a motion on that?
No, I think Commissioner Moss wants to speak.
This is a question. I'm not comfortable with the large disparity that's already been cited. I'm not sure, though, that I understand the timeline, and that is if you're going into mediation, and if I heard you correctly, additional information can come out during the course of mediation, which we don't have here and now in making this decision. So, you know, I'm not sure what you're asking us. I mean, if we, it doesn't sound like any of us really is comfortable with this number, but are you asking us like the highest you should go? Or can you just come back to us after mediation and say, this is what I learned during mediation?
Yes. Certainly, we, after the mediation, we would go ahead and report back. And, you know, the goal at every mediation is to arrive at a number. Whether the county would be comfortable recommending that number to you all for approval, whether, you know, the Sedwani's are stuck on a number that we think is too high and we would not make a recommendation of settlement at or anything like that, we can always do that, yes. But the key here is that we want to try and get an offer to them, begin the settlement process, and also start the clock ticking on the expert witness fees and costs. Because in preparation for either trial or something like that, they will have the experts redo their reports, they will have, you know, new evaluations come in, and all of that money spent, if they don't beat the offer of judgment, is on them. We won't be responsible for it. So it's something else that the Sedwani's and their attorney and their experts would have to consider moving forward. We want to try and make them pause and think a little bit before they just run away and run up the bill without any consequence.
Staff recommendation is the board approve and offer a judgment to the Sedwani's in the amount of $485,000.
So what happens, though, if you go into mediation and you feel that you would want to revise this recommendation? How does that work?
Yeah. Commissioner Moss and Mr. DeBrau kind of bring me back on track if I'm wrong here. I think those are two separate issues going on. So what we have, one is with the respect of if we're going to go to trial, the 485 number sets our number for if we end up in trial. Now, when we go into the mediation realm, certainly, we have the ability to go higher than that, settle at something higher if we feel it's a way to settle at trial, contain our costs or the like. There are two are sort of two separate tracks. So we're not looking today for you to say, what is our number in mediation? It's, we're going to go to 485 and not a dime more. It's more of if we're going to end up in trial, as Mr. DeBrau said, we're going to try to work to cap the costs that we could be exposed to. But at the same time, we'll be working through the mediation process. And if we can be successful in mediation, we'll be happy to bring back whatever mediated settlement we get to. And Mr. DeBrau, let me know if you've got anything to add to that.
Nope. Well done.
Okay. No, I see. Thank you. That answers the question.
Commissioners, any further questions?
Ms. Chair, I just want to comment that, you know, when we make motions, we generally tend on them to be wins. We hope, you know, we've got to count to three, but we hope that those motions are wins. In this case, it's very difficult to see that at this point, looking at the number offered and the number of the expectation. And I don't know where that's going to go. So $1 over that offer triggers off all the expenses of all the experts and all the legal fees, plus whatever is decided upon. Is that correct, Counselor?
Yes, that's correct.
You know, so moving forward, I'm not saying that their expectations are overzealous or unfair. And I'm not saying that the offer is maybe underzealous and unfair. You know, they were done by people who do assessments and appraisals and calculated according to their standards. It just, it defies sense of how disparuous they truly are. And at that point, we make motion today, we are going to trigger off, again, we'll have mediation. In mediation, anything can happen. They can go for the whole parcel, they can go for less of a matter, maybe a better understanding, different public use, or whatever the case may be, that's up to the two parties at mediation or the mediators. I don't have a whole lot of high expectation for that and know that, again, it's probably going to go the whole gamut of trial overtaking. And at that point, it appears that just $1 more is going to trigger off a whole lot more costs to the taxpayer. That's the difficulty that I'm in the balance, or I think some of us are. It's just, it's tough to go forward to know that you're going to have to play in a different field.
So.
Just a matter of time.
To the commission, to that comment, we met as a team. It certainly was not on Bill DeBrau's shoulders, I can tell you. I was at that meeting, Susan Prado was at that meeting, we had outside counsel. I was comfortable with the 485. I think that was the number. We've got sort of three choices as a board to consider. We can either go with staff recommendation, which is make the offer of judgment at the 485 number. You can decide you're not ready to go in that direction and not make an offer. Or you can decide if you think the discrepancy between the two is so different, you'd like to offer a little more. We were just trying to have something that was close to what we thought was our appraisal number and then enough of a sweetener that made them really think about it and protected us in litigation. But we stick with, we're comfortable with our 485. But certainly, to the board, if you want to offer more or not want to do it today, that's your program.
Mr. Debaugh?
You're in an arena now, commissioners, where you're not really evaluating the accuracy of the valuation of an appraisal. What you're evaluating or evaluating is the forecast of the strength of the plaintiff's case. And what that means is the experts that advise us and ultimately you come up with a forecast of the outcome that you're now trying to offer to the other side that will ultimately de-incentivize their willingness and confidence to litigate. So often, that number creates a disparity between actual value, the value of a taking, and ultimately, the outcome of a trial. So we're today here to set a benchmark in the litigation process, not necessarily reflect on what we think the valuation of the property is. So that typically has a sweetener, as Dylan put it so well, so that some of that incentive or disincentive to litigate passes through the minds of plaintiff's counsel and hopefully incentivizes a more reasonable approach to the mediation, which is on a parallel track and may or may not succeed, but is independent of the litigation. And in fact, nothing in the mediation is admissible at the trial. So that's why this process seems a bit out of place, but it's very much part of a strategic plan to settle the case or litigate it.
Mr. Chair, so December of 2020 was the take order, as I understand. So here we are 23 months later, essentially, and I suppose there's been correspondence back and forth, trying to work something out with due diligence. It seems to me that's a long time. Additionally, would this, the stalling, if you will, does this hinder the progress on 66th Avenue?
No. The property is already owned by the county. As you can see by the aerial, the pond is dug, the right-of-way is set, the fence has been moved back and everything like that. We've been, we own the property, so we've been moving along.
No delay.
I think having two years and three months involved in this, it sounded move forward. I'll move staff's recommendation.
I'll be glad to second that. I have a motion by Commissioner Law, seconded by myself. Anybody from the public wish to comment on the motion? Commissioners, all those in favor moving staff's recommendation, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. Thank you, Mr. DeBrau.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on to item 14, Commissioners Matters.
And if I may, actually, just really quickly, I think, and Mr. DeBrau can correct me, this is one that we've always seen is pretty much was going to go to trial when we saw this from the get-go. But I think this one and one other property that we are still trying to settle, we're really the only two, I think from all of Mr. DeBrau's hard work, that really are even close to going to trial with everything else having brought to this board as a settlement, working with the property owners. So I think that was a great testament that you didn't see 20 of these types of cases coming to the board. And we really wanted to limit these to just the one or two left. And as Mr. DeBrau said, we already own the property, so in that regards, it's not holding up the project. So I just want to thank Mr. DeBrau for helping us get through all of those cases.
You're welcome.
Thank you. All right. Moving on to Commissioners Matters. Item B, Commissioner Vice Chairman, Mr. Adams.
Thank you. Thank you, commissioners. I would like to request a discussion about 82nd Avenue and the road conditions. I think we're all aware of the conditions out there. This isn't the first time that issues affecting 82nd Avenue have come to us. But at this point, I'm bringing this forward because it's a hazard right now and no real solution has been offered other than it's not our responsibility, it's not their responsibility, whatever. I don't believe that's a reasonable solution or path forward. Currently, I've had numerous residents and businesses reach out to me over the course of the past three to four months, concerned about the conditions, concerned about their safety, concerned about just the general roadway. And And I got together with some of the local property owners. Their thoughts was to put together some type of plan that we could bring to the Commission for discussion. So that, at this point, is, the thought would be to do a chip seal process, which the quote that they received was $350,000. The businesses on the roadway would contribute about $50,000 in material, and they would be asking the county for $300,000 towards the project, similar to how we structured it last time, although there was no money involved when we gave the millings the last time this came up. Just some historical context on this road, because I know the issues that have been raised in the past. But this road is part of historic Citrus Highway, which is a regional road that has been on the MPO-TPO regional plan for many, many years. Martin and St. Lucie no longer have that as a priority, but Indian River County has always kept it on the list. There's a 1944 easement that has no county signature, but honestly, the county has been performing maintenance on this road under the agreement for almost 80 years, up until, I think, about 10 years ago, when it was milled originally. We permit sand mines and other businesses on this road, using it as access. These are large commercial businesses with industrial uses. And, you know, in my opinion, we bear some responsibility for allowing these uses for the condition of the road. Eventually, we're going to get the road from DOT after the 82nd Avenue improvements are done, but there needs to be some kind of stopgap. I don't think we can just say nothing's gonna be done until DOT comes in and does the road. Because if nothing is done, DOT is gonna move forward with the north part of 82nd, and they're going to dump all those new travelers, cutting down from 510, onto a very substandard portion of 82nd Avenue. And I know this was a discussion point at a most recent MPO meeting. Even having some of those residents asked to have that process swapped to avoid that because of the conditions, the current conditions of 82nd Avenue. I know it's been, at least the county attorney indicated to me earlier in the week, that we have maintained this road long enough that we could legitimately file for a maintenance map, which to me indicates that we understand and have been maintaining it and have some responsibility to that, irregardless of the opinions on the 1944 easement. So we're here to have, I'm here to have that discussion with you guys. If the current proposal solution from the local property owners is not something that's amenable to everybody, then I would like for some solution to be presented to move forward. Because in my opinion, just leaving it as it is currently is not a reasonable or responsible or safe option. So I know that there's some residents and business owners here, Mr. Hammond is here as well, as a business owner, not as a board member of the Improvement District, but, and I believe Mr. Davis is in the back as well. But I, you know, we need to have the conversation. I'm just, I get tired of not doing anything and just kind of kicking the can, so that's kind of the ask at this point. If that is not something that the board wants to move forward with, then I need to know what we can and are willing to move forward with.
I'm amazed. I agree with you on this road. I drove this road last week. It's, it is a very real safety risk. You actually can't use the road. You're just riding on the shoulders. The road is impassable. And even on the shoulders, when you're riding on the road, your teeth are chattering. That's, that's, I mean, it's terrible. And it's just such a big risk that we do need, I agree with you, we need a stopgap measure, and I would definitely support that.
What's your idea again? Of course, what's your idea?
So the proposal that was brought to me would be that there is a chip seal process that's being utilized in St. Lucie County on many of their dirt roads. It's also being used in Osceola County quite successfully on their dirt roads. The price that was quoted was $350,000. $50,000 would come from the property owners in the form of materials for the base of the road, and they would be asking for $300,000 to come from us, with it set up similar to the last time we did this, or did some improvements there when we donated millings. I think there's a LLC group that that went through to get that project done. It can be a county project, but I know Rich's group is very busy right now, so the property owners, as they did in the past, could act as the project manager on that.
Commissioner Fleischer.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There's no refuting, it's not, I didn't just take one ride, I've been riding that road a lot of years. And more recently, it's actually become an expense factor for the current vehicle that I own. It has taken out the front end. It is a tough road to travel, if you want to take the whole route and get up towards And we've been riding a storm, and you mentioned kicking the can. There's been some maintenance in different directions, and there's always been this debate about ownerships and rights. And I think that has convoluted most of the issue. And looking at this, something must be done, yes, okay, well agreed on that. But looking at the future of the road, I know I'm going beyond today. And coupled with the fact that what Mr. Mattson presented today that we approved on a separate issue, and it did indicate that I'd be revisiting that once again. In looking at this, we find Florida State Statute 95361, which gives us some time elements as to who owns the roadway, who's responsible for the roadway. And it, it may not be so imperative today, but in the future, it will be, because there will be ownership of the road, there will be maintenance of the road, there'll be a contribution to the road, and then who owns the road to sell? And when is it turned over to FDOT? Because ultimately, that's when we're gonna get a real road. So this may be not kicking the can, it'll just be moving the post a bit. It'll get it to a comfort, comfortable zone for the time being, but so did the millings. So again, the millings didn't fare that well. And as expected, as projected, Rich indicated that, he's not fond of the millings, and it just, it did a job for a very brief period of time. So very concerned that we're not looking at the true ownership and obligation of the road, that if we did so, we can, we might be able to expedite this to a full road, as opposed to waiting to see when we can get along with the district and release some of the right and obligation and get with the owner of the road while we're still trying to have commerceability on the road. And more and more citizens are using the road, but I just would wait at the end of the road and just look at their vehicles. It is horrendous. So I agree with you, but I think that there is a bigger picture to look at. We can probably get this repaired, but I want to ask counsel if we, are we altering anything by going forward with what you're suggesting without having an agreement and the bigger picture for FDOT takeover of the road?
Certainly, it's the pleasure of this board to decide how it wishes to go forward with 82nd Avenue and the resolution of it. Certainly, whatever decision gets made by this board will be put into an interlocal agreement similar to as we did in form several years ago. I believe it was in 2021, when we had provided the millings, and that was used for the improvements on 82nd. So certainly, whatever the decision is, we'll bring it back to SRID Board. Their attorney and myself will work on an interlocal agreement and bring it back to both boards for approval. I will note, I'd be happy to answer the questions on 95.361 Florida statutes. I think it's been referenced both by Commissioner Fleischer and Commissioner Adams. As I, Commissioner Adams referenced, I believe we've maintained the roads through the facts and information that I've gotten from Public Works for the requisite time period set forth within the statute that would turn that road into a public road and a county road under the statute by operation of law. And simply, the maintenance map process would be used, much as like we did for 61st Drive a couple weeks ago, simply to memorialize that further, and it serves under the statute as prime and facial evidence of our ownership of that road. One thing I would like to note is that staff has had conversations with Mr. Hammond about fixing up this road. I don't think staff's position at this point is that it shouldn't be improved or that staff wouldn't be involved in that. I think really what we're, what we're really at is a difference of opinions is what the terms of whatever ILA would be. I'll throw in my two cents of when I attended a SRID meeting several weeks ago, this issue came up, and it was interesting for me when I heard from SRID staff that, one, it was their view that the county, it was a county road, and therefore, it was the county's responsibility to maintain, while at the same time, in the same discussion, their attitude was, oh, and by the way, regardless of the fact that it's a county road and the county's responsible for maintaining it, when FDOT comes in to take that road, we, SRID, are gonna be the ones who are gonna get the big check from FDOT. And that just didn't sit with me right in that meeting. And so for me, I felt like SRID deserved a little bit more, a little bit more skin in the game if they were gonna be looking to get the check for, for the roadway from FDOT while the county was doing the maintenance. Certainly, I will support whatever the board's decision is on this, and will certainly work to put together an ILA with SRID staff that gets this project done. Those are just my insights.
Mr. Chairman?
And Counselor, if, you know, oftentimes devil's in the details, and we'll know up
the road what that'll be, and then we'll have to bring it back. In looking at that possibility, when we discuss doing the work, and again, very generous offer by Mr. Hammond and friends, and there could be a very good agreement to get the job done, and the taxpayer stepping up with about $300,000, if that's actually gonna be, the price may have changed this morning, it's like the stock market, maybe it went down, maybe it went up. Whatever the case is, the investment, if it's not looked at as a grant, if it's looked at as a repair to the roadway, will that alter any possibility of mapping or the future of the roadway if it's done now in that manner? And which would be the best path?
Well, from a legal perspective, if we, if, as long as we were able to prove, and I believe we can, that we've maintained the roadway for the seven-year period under the statute, clearly then becomes our road, we own it, we can go maintain it, this board directs us to go do so. And, you know, obviously, in the timeframes that we need to meet in order to get such a project done, that would certainly be one method. I don't know if SRID would challenge that or state that we don't meet the evidence. We certainly would have a hearing here, don't know if they would challenge it. But if we certainly met those requirements, then we could go fix that road when we have the ability to do so. I don't think it really expedites versus decreases the amount of time to get it done if we were able to get a otherwise reasonable combination and deal with SRID.
So is there a point in discussing the remedy to the taxpayer that's making this investment by our hand? As far as what happens in the future, what happens a year from now, after everything's all done and everybody's traveling on the road and it's all nice with the chip seal process, and it's a nice roadway? And then perhaps maybe we do do a mapping and we have that contest, and then we determine that FDOT is going to take it over and we were the benefactor, not SRID or vice versa, conversely? How does that affect so that we can protect the taxpayer in doing this process?
If I may, Dylan, I think you have to answer the threshold question first, which is who's gonna sell this road to FDOT? Until you answer that question, I don't think you can address what the maintenance remedy is right now. Because you're gonna pay to fix the road, and then somebody else is gonna sell it.
Because there has been talk about, do we, do we do an unapproved road, an approved road, and then the difference will be returned back to the great benevolence of the county? Or the exact dollar-for-dollar exchange? Or nothing? Because it's not needed? Because it's.
Or a credit to be applied at the sale?
Excuse me?
Or an interest-free loan to improve the road now and apply the credit at the sale? Or have the county take it over now, improve it, and then the county sell it to FDOT? But I don't think you can have it both ways in all good conscience. Can you?
I don't think so.
Well, Dylan, does, if we, if we map the road, if we take the road over, do we, do we then own the right-of-way and would FD purchase it from us, or they still purchase it from the Improvement District?
So under the maintenance map process, under the statute, if we have regular maintained or repaired for the immediate past seven years, then such road shall be deemed to be dedicated to the public to the extent of the width that actually has been maintained or repaired for the prescribed time, whether the road has been formally established as a public highway. And basically, it means that the dedication shall vest all rights, title, easement, and appurtenances in and to the road to the county. So at that point, we own the road to the width that, and it's ours.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah, no, sorry.
I also look at the liability that the county is exposed to today. I travel there somewhat frequently. I'll tell you, one of the bigger things is it's, this is an impression of Indian River County when a month and a half ago, there were over 500 visitors at the shooting range, for example, from all over the nation, by the way, a very prestigious tournament. Also, an investor is building probably a $4 or $5 million clubhouse out there that's going to, again, refuel this county. Not only the traffic on 66th and 58th, you know, we certainly need to improve this to have another corridor on the west. One question is, what is the timeline on 82nd Avenue from 69th Street going to 510? Do we know that?
Rich, was it 2025 that they were gonna start the northern end, and then would the rest of it be completed by '28, or do you have the exact dates?
Rich Berg, Public Works Director. Yeah, so right now, DOT has bought the right-of-way. They are projecting that in 2025, 2026, there'll be funding for the construction, and it'll be done by 2026, 2027.
That's the northern part?
That's the north part, from 69th to 510.
Correct.
The south part, the right-of-way has not been acquired, as we're talking right now. There is no funding that I know of for the next five years for the south portion of it for right-of-way acquisition, and then subsequently for construction. I know that they're working on construction plans so that they can go into the right-of-way acquisition process when funding is available. But at this time, there is no funding available for the south section of 82nd Avenue from 69th Street down to 26th Street.
Mr. Chair, and Mr. Berg, if we do the chip and seal, and then that 2024-25 project to the north end, how is that going to affect? How's the chip and seal gonna hold up? Do we know? Do we have anybody?
I can't. So first of all, they're only chip sealing from Blue Goose's mine to the north section to 69th Street. The rest of that road is basically just millings that's starting to fall apart. starting to fall apart like the rest of the roadway is now.
So that's like the 5700 block?
So, yeah, right around there. Right now, I can't tell you chip sailing, what they're proposing. I haven't personally seen it. I don't know how it's going to stand up to the, to the truck traffic. I just don't know at this point. If that's the way, if that's the way they go, whether if the county does it, then we'll get into the engineering portion of it and the soils portion of it. If they do it, then, you know, it's on them. If it falls apart like the Millings did after two weeks, well, we're not liable for it other than we've put $300,000 into it. It worked. I've talked to the engineer who designed it down in St. Lucie County. He says it's holding up pretty well. However, it's not subject to the traffic that this road is going to see from the truck traffic. I've looked at the design. I think it needs to be beefed up a little bit. But again, right now, we're just trying to figure out who's going to be responsible for it. I will say that there is an option. You can go in and pulverize what's there now and start grading it. I've got, if you ever want to see that, what happens with that, go to 58th Avenue south of Oslo Road. We had a Millings project that failed. We made the contract to rebuild it. It still wouldn't hold together. And we made the decision to mix it in and then we grade it every couple of weeks. That's what we do. It's just a kind of a dirt road slash rock road. And we just grade it. That's an option. Right now, it's just a 82nd Avenue, it's just a big bunch of potholes. We're not really, nobody's doing really anything to it except, you know, we got holes and we got to fix it. So we can, there's options out there. If the board decides, hey, Public Works, go fix it. That's going to be what I'm going to do so we can at least get it so they can move up and down it. And I'll have to station a grader out there, you know, send a grader out there once a week to knock it down and fill in the holes. But that option's there for them, too. They are construction. Blue Goose is a construction company. They have this equipment. They have, they can, they have access to rock. They have access to Millings. So it's kind of like, you tell us what you want to do, how you want us to move, and we'll move. I've got several plans already in my head about this. I'm just looking for direction of what you want to do and how this is going to all play out.
Do the sand mines not have any skin in this game? Well, I thought we held Doc Fisher's group to an issue out there on south of Oslo on their sand mine. Are they not supposed to be responsible for that road? Like provide, put dirt on it and make it so it's not potholy and as rough as heck?
So the sand mines are under the, have the same agreement that the mines in the south do. They're supposed to maintain the road. It's in their mining permit with the county. When they put the, you know, when the Millings were working fine, it was basically the county was go fill the potholes and that's what Public Works did for a while. So, but that is there. They technically are responsible to maintain the roadway per their mining permit. They're also, from a letter that we received from SRID, the mines and everybody else that uses that road is technically by their, the way they look at it, if we issued you a permit to access 82nd Avenue, well, guess what? You got to, you're part of the maintenance people. You need to maintain it. That's what SRID sent to us in a letter in 2020, I believe, when we were, there was a culvert failure and we started getting into this. So there's several options out there. It's just a question of how we move forward.
Let me get ahead of the game here. If we were to reach an agreement right away with SRID or we mapped it and we take it over, how quick could you do something to make it an adequate road for now? Then my thinking is, then we make it a good road, but we never make it a great road because DOT is going to come in and tear everything up and do what they do when they do construction. That's a couple of years away. But what would you do right away? And what would you think would be the process?
So from the word go, if that's, the road becomes ours, first thing I'm going to do is I'm going to go out there, we're going to grade it, we're going to add some Millings to it, and we're going to just start grading it like a dirt road. All these big bomb creators that are out there won't be there anymore. They'll be able to go up and down the roadway. It'll be like a dirt road. And then it'll take me a few months because I have to go through the bidding process. I may be able to piggyback off of the contract that's down in St. Lucie I just got to see. But I'm one of those people who likes to build something that's going to stay for a while. And to do that, I need to do the engineering. My staff needs to do the engineering and move it. You're looking at six, seven months before I'm going to really be able to build something that I think is going to stay there over time. I do not want to be in a position where in two years from now, I'm standing in front of the board going, well, guess what? The road failed and I got to spend more money to do it. I'm just not comfortable with that. If they want to take that on and it fails or lasts, hey, if it lasts, that's great. I'm just not comfortable knowing that road, knowing what's out there right now. I'm just not comfortable with it. But probably eight months, seven, eight months before I could get something out and under construction to fix that road, it more than just a dirt road slash Millings road.
Right away, you could do something. And would you feel comfortable with that? And with it being safe? I mean, is, I mean, like, right away?
I could do something right away. It's just going to be, it's going to be a dirt road, basically. It's going to go back to the way it was in pre-2012 before Millings got put down. It'll just have Millings mixed in with the dirt and it'll have, you know, be like a gravel road up north. You know, all gravel up north, you've seen them, they use granite, small gravel, and they grade the gravel once in a while. That's what this is going to be for a while. It'll be safe. You know, again, it's not a raceway, boys and girls. It's going to hold up, but it's got to be, they got to, you know, drive carefully. But it's going to be a road. It's not going to have the bomb creators that it has in there right now. But again, I'd have to shut down my operation to move trucks out there and then I'll move a grader and a dozer out there and we'll get it up and running. It'll take me a couple of weeks, but I can do it. We're Public Works. We can do it.
Yeah. I think, I think we all agree that we got to do something. And I'm with you on who's going to, you know, who's going to do it. We need to decide to do it. I've heard even, I kind of agree with Mr. Zito. I don't know if we can have it both ways here as to what we want to do. I had spoke with Mr. Hammond and laid out an idea to say that, be it whatever we want to call this, we certainly have to be legal, and I'm certainly no attorney, but that the district award us the easements maybe on a temporary basis, we start right away with taking the road over, the maintenance of the road and doing what you just heard Rich described. And whatever cost that we incur from this point in time up until they get their check from DOT for the easements and the right-of-way that they get, that they reimburse it to us to make us whole for what we spent on the road. That, to me, was an interest-free loan, I guess you could say, or just, or our part of it. I'm sure we'll do more than what Rich would actually put down for maintenance. He's just that kind of a gentleman when it comes to projects like this. He always does that extra because he likes it to be perfect. That was, that was my first offer to do that. I do get a little bit, just to put, for us to write him a check for $300,000 to have this done, that my Public Works Director is, says it's good, but he's not real sure about it, especially due to the dump truck traffic out there. I'm a little bit concerned about that. And I think that if we're going to do what you say, the dump, the sand mines should supply the sand and they should have some part in this, too, because they're probably kind of the ones that created this whole issue, certainly not cars going back and forth or going to the Vera Sporting Clay course and all that stuff that tore, that made this road in the condition that it's in. So something needs to be done. And that was, that was my first offer, I guess, per se, to Mr. Hammond. And he came back with me, to me the other day and said, well, they don't want, they don't want to pay, improvement district doesn't want to pay anything. They don't want to do that. How about you come up with an idea of, take this idea of, we get it appraised now and we appraise it after when the DOT comes in and y'all get the difference on the appraisal? I have a question about that on how it's measurable, how it's, you know, what kind of money are we talking? But, you know, where do, at what point in time do you do the appraisal? What time do you do the appraisal? Do you, how long do you do it before the DOT gets it? I mean, they may already have an idea of what they're going to pay. I don't know. I think that's, that's a little iffy. And it can be done. I spoke with some folks yesterday that it could be done. We, that's something we'd have to get into appraisal. But the bottom line is, we got to get the road fixed and somebody's got to do it. And we're probably the right person to do it. I mean, as much as I appreciate Mr. Hammond as a friend and what he's done in this county and the people that live there, we build roads. That guy over there in his jacket builds roads. He knows how to build roads. We ought to build a road and move this project forward. It's just a matter of how are we going to move the project forward? And I think this is what you were saying, and the best way for the taxpayer, all the taxpayers to get, to be, to be, to have this done properly in this. You know, I'm not against mapping the road and we just take the road. But, you know, I don't really want to go to court with Sebastian River Improvement District over who's going to get the money when the FDOT gets it. Because we're to the point now where it's become a safety item and we're derelict in our duty as commissioners if we don't protect public safety. That's what I, that's kind of where I'm going with this thing, especially after all the emails I got from folks talking about, you know, I just got run over, about run over by a dump truck. I got this and I got that. That's a serious issue to me. And I think it's something we need to act on. So that's where I'm at right now. And I'll certainly open up for more comment from y'all. Commissioner Fleischer.
Chair, and well said. And I know that, I believe that counsel and our Intermodal County Administrator has dispelled some of my concerns about future application. And if that's the case, if, I know, eager to hear from anybody who's endured this meeting to want to speak about it. But if Commissioner Adams' motion is to move, move this forward and get the job done and direct our county attorney to work up a formidable ILA and have the roadway repaired now in the immediacy, it's a $300,000 investment to our, to our public, our future. And the road is in horrendous condition. It's not this worry about, is it the trucks? Is it the traffic? There's other businesses that are also aligned with this that are dependent upon this roadway as a main thoroughfare, as well as the citizens trying to get up north, those northerners that live up there that travel the roadway. So if that's-
If you would be willing to second that motion, I will be happy to make that motion.
Well, that's what I said. I said, I believe that that is, Commissioner Adams, if it is, I would be happy to.
That is a great synopsis of my motion. Yes, that's exactly it.
So that, so your motion was to-
My motion was to fix-
Move forward.
Move forward with the chip and seal.
Get the roadway fixed as we go forward today?
Correct. Yes.
And have-
Have an ILA.
County attorney do the ILA.
Mm-hmm. That's it.
Who's going to, who's going to do the road? Are we going to be involved in it or is this strictly done with the?
It sounds like we're writing a check.
Who's going to do it?
I think, Mr. Chair, what the motion is, and I agree with the motion as well, is that we work with Mr. Hammond and others. We pay the $300,000. I say, like Commissioner Fleischer says, that's an investment, number one. Number two, that's going to decrease the repairs that we're having to do already, expending county dollars to do that. So that should minimize that. But more importantly, for the residents and the business owners out there, will make a huge difference, not to mention the tax dollars that we're going to get from those commerce, whether it be sales, tax, or whatever. I think it's a good idea to get it moving, particularly before the rainy season gets here.
I don't disagree with any of y'all. I think we got to get the road fixed right away. I'm just thinking that we build roads.
We do, but this is-
And for $300,000, he could get a lot done for $300,000 and we could start this, he could start this right away. It's just a matter of financially how you want to do it. If you just want to say, okay, here, I mean, what we're saying is, here's Sebastian River Improvement District, here's $300,000 check?
Yes.
Get the road fixed?
Yes.
And it's been going on way too long.
I think we should have some oversight on it. I mean, if it's, everybody thinks, seems to think it's our road. I think we should have some oversight on it and our Public Works should be involved in this project. That's just me. I'm not against it. And I'm just telling you, I've got some questions I think that need to be answered because I got to agree with our county administrator. I don't think we can have this both ways. Somebody's got to take this project and run with it and bring it to completion. And I don't think we can have it both ways. I think to try to make them happy and us happy, somebody might be unhappy, but somebody's got to steer this ship.
That's why we'd have the interlocal agreement. That's why the attorney and the others would hash this out before we start.
Well, I want to be clear on the ILA. What I heard is the motion is, it's going to be a really simple ILA. It's going to be, county's going to stroke a check for $300,000 to Sebastian River Improvement District. They will then be responsible for permitting a project that includes a chip and seal, whatever thing, and they will permit that and they will get it done. That's, that's the ILA. That's, that's how I understand it.
That's the way I understand it. Is that the way y'all understand?
We may want to hear from Mr. Hammond.
Okay. All right, we have a motion.
Just for clarity, Commissioner Fleischer, you're referring to an ILA or a maintenance map?
No, no, no.
You're referring to an ILA that codifies the gift?
It's a local agreement.
And then the ownership of the road is just in worse to the-
That's here, right?
That's where? Right now, it's in SRID. It's going to stay there?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
It stays there. Again, that's why I brought up the statute that gives us a little latitude. And I was trying to get some clarity whether that would be a mappable item, a mappable roadway, so that we didn't have to worry about who's paying for what later on.
My understanding from the motion was there was no aspect of a maintenance map part of it. It was simply an interlocal agreement. We hand $300,000 to SRID and they do the road. That's, that's my understanding of the motion.
But how long is it going to take for a maintenance map?
But-
Again, we're going through this for a long period of time. We need some immediacy to get it repaired sooner than later.
But my understanding is there's, there's-
It's almost improbable.
If the board wants to go through a maintenance map process, we can do that. But that seems at odds with what the motion was, which was simply to hand $300,000 to SRID and they're going to get the road done under the chip and seal process. And Commissioner Adams just verify, is that the motion? I thought that was what it was.
Yes, that is the motion. And I think Commissioner Fleischer's point is the maintenance map issue could come back at a later time once the road conditions are addressed. Is that what I'm understanding?
They could travel separate pathways, can they not, Counselor?
So I-
That's why I asked, does this interfere with that process if it's applied later on?
My only concern is under 95.361 is the, SRID is going to have an argument that if they do the road work, then their argument to us back is going to be that we are not currently maintaining and repairing the road because they just did.
Then let me ask this question. Are we willing to do the project? Instead of handing them a check, are we willing to do the same project quickly so it can be addressed sooner rather than later and then we can travel the maintenance map route?
We're going to change tack.
I would, if it's our road.
Let me, let-
I don't know. I'm just-
Let me do something that will keep our chair in balance is I withdraw my second at this point.
Okay.
Okay? So that we can discuss other options.
Okay.
As opposed to going forward. And with the motion, if that's okay, Madam Vice Chair?
Of course.
Okay. So I just withdrew my second-
Yeah, that's fine.
For that motion.
Okay.
Okay.
So if what we're trying, so if the concern is that you have to demonstrate seven years of maintenance to file, or whatever it is, is it seven, four?
No.
Well, so there's two separate things. There's one, there's a four-year if you can demonstrate that you're the one who did the road and has maintained it. If there's some ambiguity as to who built the road, started the road, then seven years. I always try to be conservative and use the seven years because that way, if there's a challenge as to whether we were the ones who built the road or someone else did, that we could, it would be faulty to our legal argument. But clearly, the seven years is a much, if we can prove that, it's a much better place to be in the argument.
Okay. So let me just, I'll just be very, try to be very clear. I don't- I don't particularly care about how it gets done. Whatever makes this group more comfortable, whether the check is given to SRID or the organization of businesses, or whether we do it ourselves. At the end of the day, I want a commitment that we are going to do something to the road immediately and then have a, we're going to address the safety concerns immediately so it's traversable. It's not traversable today. And then have an ultimate, even if it takes a little bit longer for our group to do it than it might take for SRID to do it, a more stable, longer-term solution to get us to the DOT process. Because right now, there is no solution. I guess what I'm trying to say is I don't care who does it, but I want a commitment today that somebody's going to do it.
Well agreed, well agreed. And that, that was my point and I'm glad for a second level of clarification because I don't want to contaminate up the road, pardon the expression. But I would let, we, we all agree on something. All five of us agree that the roadway needs to be improved. Probably yesterday would have been a better day. We might have saved somebody's front end. Didn't save mine, but it, it happens. It, it, you say it's nearly untrav- traversable. Yeah, yeah. You can't, you can't get through there without going down at least one good chassis slam. It's that bad. So let's get it, something fixed today. So let's find out from Rich.
Can I recommend this?
What, we can do that?
That could be done. Rich, you go out, fix it to make it gradable, like in the next couple of weeks, and then work on the chip seal or comparable solution for the longer-term stabilization.
Yeah, I can go out there and probably within three weeks have a traversable, gradable road. The question is, am I grading it? The board's going to have to tell me where we're going. Am I grading it from, in perpetuity until I build this supposed chip seal road that's going to stand up to these trucks? I don't know. So that's what I'm going to need. Are we going to have full access to the road? Are we going to own the roadway? I, I'm going to need to know that. Are we not, are we going to do the maintenance map? So it's kind of like, it's all, I can do it. I can do just about anything. I just need to have clear direction that if we're going to spend the taxpayer dollars on the roadway, we own the underlying roadway so that we can do what we need to do on the roadway. If not, then you guys just tell me, Rich, just go do it and I'll do whatever I'm told. I mean, it's, it's, it's clear that we don't own the roadway right now, but we can do a maintenance map and own the roadway and treat it as a county road and we can fix it up however we want.
So I'm hearing from the board, total unison, consensus, 5-0, need to get the road done now. I think Rich and I and Michael are all hearing that loud and clear. So my thought process is based upon kind of where this discussion is going, is direction to Public Works to do the traversable, gradable road within the next three weeks, four weeks, if it takes another week. At the same time, directing the county attorney's office to work with the survey group to create a maintenance map to bring back to this board for review and approval. So you know that you're kind of running down two tracks at the same time. But that's, that's just something, I didn't know if that was palatable or, or met the goals of, of the, the board.
I think, I think you're on the, on the right track there. I think it's something, and that's what I was saying when I, when I did my part of the speech here, is we need to get this road done right away. I just think we as the county are in a best position to get it done sooner than if, if it went to somebody that's not really familiar with building roads. We, we can start right away. I mean, Rich could probably get somebody out there tomorrow to, to, to do something that at least make it a little bit better and then he can chance to work on it over the next, over the next few weeks to get it where it needs to be.
Yes.
Yes, I think that's what we should do other than cutting a check right now. I think the next thing that we should do is to do what you proposed or, and/or enter into some sort of negotiations, have staff do it on the level, enter into some sort of negotiations with the Sebastian River Improvement District to come up with an agreement. Because I'll go back to what Mr. Zito said and I completely agree. In the long term, we can't have this both ways. But the urgency is, is that we get the road fixed, we own our dime, we, we, we get it done out there and we move forward with this project. So that would be my recommendation based on what I'm hearing also. I can't make the motion, so I'll leave it.
Is that, is that Commissioner Adams' motion? Because it's her item, she put out.
Right, so my motion would be to direct Public Works to move forward with stabilizing the road in the next three to four weeks to make it traversable. Then we will grade the road to keep it that way. At the same time, we will look into solutions to stabilize the road in the longer term.
Second.
Well, question. Yes. If I understood the chairman correctly, we want to do two things. We want to own the road and we want to repair the road. We want to own the road for the purpose of satisfying the taxpayer, since we're about to spend a little money. And we want to repair the road for a matter of public safety. So there are two matters. So we want to own it and repair it. At least that's my opinion. How does the board, you want to own it and repair it?
I think that works out very well.
The county owns it.
If the road is stabilized today and then we look at the mapping and get that accomplished as we're going forward with options for permanent improvement.
Didn't include that in your, didn't include that in your.
Okay, so let me clarify then. When I say options for permanent stability or longer-term stability, maintenance mapping is part of that conversation.
Yes.
That would be part of what's wrapped up into what those options would be. Because you can have the option that we're just going to do something larger term. We are going to maintenance map it. We're going to create an ILA. We're going to fix the easement that was given in 1944. There's all those different options in there. That's part of that. But what I would like is it stabilized immediately.
Yes.
And then a longer-term stability solution. That conversation that would then come back and that would include options, including maintenance map, options including ILA, options including all those other things I just listed.
Second is confirmed. And a little more discussion, then we can look at hardcore asphalt, chip seal or whatever's going to work out well.
All that was wrapped up, yes.
For our roadway. Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, is that a motion, Commissioner?
Yes, that's, was a very long motion.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Fleischer.
Yes, sir.
Is that a second?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I have a motion by Commissioner. I have a motion by Commissioner Adams, second by Commissioner Fleischer. Anybody wish to comment on the motion from the public? Who'd like you? Name and address for the record, sir.
Tom Hammond, 5955 82nd Avenue. First of all, thank you all very much for bringing this topic up today. It's a well-deserved topic. Just a, just a comment, I guess, relative to how you move forward on this is that I, I like Rich's idea about getting out there quickly and getting something done on the road immediately so at, at least we, we start the improvement right away. I would be a little careful about continuing a maintenance program like that for any length of time, especially when we get into the rainy season, because Rich would have to have a grader out there every day. When we get into the rainy season, we're, when we're getting two to three inches of rain out there and that, the road just deteriorates so quickly when you get a lot of traffic on it. So I, I support, I support what you guys are moving forward on. I just hope that we can get something done more permanently sooner. So, and, and I'm, any questions on anything, I'm happy to.
Thank you, Mr. Hammond. I think that would be the goal, would to get, get this done as a temporary fix and then get something done more permanent sooner rather than later.
Great. Thank you all very much.
Saved a little money today. Anyone else, please? Name and address for the record, please.
Eeyore, 9522 Shadow Lane, Fort Pierce. I'm a customer at Vera Beach Sporting Clays. I'm also the treasurer of the Florida Sporting Clays Association. And I run the ladies' organization that we put together called the Honeybells that many have heard of. We put 785 ladies through our clinics to teach them about shotgun sports. And it's a passion and I'm going to try not to keep you here longer because if I do that, we're going to be here for a long time. There's an enormous amount of people that quietly enjoy sporting, well, maybe not quietly, but enjoy the Sporting Clays and shotgun sports. And I, of course, am one of them. And what Vera Beach has done is, I mean, I'm going to cut it straight to public impact. As I do my math, we had 562 shooters here last February. Florida's a Mecca for Sporting Clays registered shooters from all over the nation, all over the world here in February. South Florida, Quail Creek, Vera Beach. Vera Beach, with their 562 people, if you did the mon, did the math, the, I would say the economic impact for that seven, eight days alone would be between a one and a half and $2 million to this county.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Anyone else? Name and address, please, sir.
My name is Todd Wood, 6755 West 82nd Avenue. Thank you very much for discussing this today. Appreciate bringing it up. I think you made reference to the sand mine and, you know, that they should be contributing to the maintenance or repair of the road. And I think that may be something that's been overlooked. 10 years ago, let's say, when the original millings were put down, they lasted up until the past three or four years or past two years, I would say, once the sand mine traffic has increased. And so I would say that's what's made the, you know, that end of the roads anyway have been, you know, sort of, are in dire need of repair. And I appreciate that. And I appreciate you discussing it today and allowing me to speak. And thank you for everything you guys do. Okay? Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Todd. I didn't recognize you. It's been a while.
I don't know if we need your name and address for the record or give it to us anyway.
Wesley Davis, 7,184th Avenue, Todd's neighbor. I appreciate the discussion and bringing this forward. It is well overdue. I think what we, what this is a classic example of is whenever the elephants fight, the natives get trampled. And we, you have elephants here as far as the, the interest of the county, as well as the interest of the Improvement District. And, and something needs to be done. And the scariest thing is not, not only just the road right now, it's that there's no plan for the road right now. And as, with what's, has happened with Sebastian and what's fixing to happen with that north-south road of 82nd Avenue going to 510, I don't know what we're going to do if we don't start planning for it right now. And with that said, Tom's a great farmer, does a great job with citrus, does a great job with his ornamentals. He's not a road builder. I feel a whole lot more comfortable with Rich grabbing this. He's given you great advice up to this point, or including this point. And that is, the, the millings just didn't work. And you can't ask a professional engineer to keep patching patches and taking blame for stuff that he can't recommend anymore. And so I really respect the position that he's in. And even coming and saying, get three votes and he'll do what, what y'all want done. And I think that's really where things are right now. And, and planning, you know, long-term down the road is really what's going to have to happen down there ahead of what, or if not, at the same time, as the DOT does the portion to the north.
It's already been a long-term, Commissioner? If, if you recall, when we discussing this, something about a citrus, roadway, highway?
Citrus highway, yeah.
And when we're talking about 82nd and it might have been in the old hospital, wasn't it? Maybe just when we got here.
We've been.
So it's been a long time.
But as far as moving, moving this thing up.
Yeah.
Making it an MPO priority, this specific portion of it, there's all kinds of ideas that can be done. But I really do appreciate the conversation here today. And, and honestly, I'm looking forward to Rich solving the problem.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to comment?
Thank you, sir.
Commissioners, before we take a vote, I have always felt that 82nd Avenue was kind of getting slighted in the MPO because you have US1, you have 58th Avenue and you have 66th Avenue or 95 is the only way to traverse from Sebastian or Vera Lake Estates down, you know, north and south. And I, I always thought that 82nd Avenue should be, should be moved up a little bit on the MPO priority. So maybe at the next MPO, something like that, if you agree with me. So that being said, we have a motion by Commissioner Adams, a second by Commissioner Fleischer on the 82nd Avenue recommendation that she proposed. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 5-0. Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Yeah. Just as a follow-up and not to extend this super awesome meeting, but it has mentioned by yourself and Mr. Wood that there is permit requirements for the sand mines that we are enforcing with some, but maybe not with others. So can we also ask staff to look into where those deficiencies are in those permits and see what can be done to encourage compliance?
So the permit requirements are for them to grade the roadway. So in order to have them do, if we change this over into a gradable roadway, then yes, we can enforce the permits. What I can't do, based on what, because I've been reading everybody's permit, they are not required to fill the potholes and do what they were doing out there. It's a stretch. I mean, if that was the case, then we could make the mines fix the road right now under their permit and walk away from it. So I'm not comfortable trying to do that because it's not really a gradable road. But if I go out there and, and make a gradable road out of the millings.
That's something we can bring back to discuss?
We can, we can go, we can go several routes. We can go code enforcement, we just call the mines and say, hey.
Okay.
I got it all set up. You guys grade it. I'll turn it over to you. You grade it until we can figure out a way for a permanent solution and see where they go.
Okay.
We can have those conversations.
That's what I needed to know. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Counselor?
And I just want to be clear because I don't want to be anyone surprised by this. I plan to reach out either later today or tomorrow to the SRID Council and say, my board's directed me to look at long-term solutions. That could be us going through the maintenance map process. But if we can, and we can resolve this through an ILA that we can all agree to, that would also be good. So that's, that's going to be going to them as, as Rich is moving forward with his Public Works improvements to the roadway.
Fabulous. Thank you.
Any other further comments?
Okay, Commissioners, with that, it's been a fruitful day, a good day. Our next meeting will be April 4th at 9:00 a.m. And with that, I de-miss adjourn.